Mayor Baker?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmembers Berry?
Here.
Councilmember Curtis?
Present.
Councilmember Herbig?
Here.
Councilmember Danuski?
Here.
Thank you.
If you will please stand and join me for the flag sleuth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We haven't had an approval of the agenda, and I just noticed this agenda is sort of out of kilter here. So I'm going to alter the -- I've got the flag sleuth after a number of things. So anyway, I'm going to alter the agenda slightly here since we haven't approved it yet. And I'm going to read a proclamation that is a proclamation on Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids, Cancer Connection, report cancer is the leading cause of death by disease amongst U.S. children between infancy and the age of 15. This tragic disease is detected in nearly 15,000 of our country's young people each and every year. Whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer, many infants, children, and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. And whereas founded over 20 years ago by Stephen Feierstein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetics family, the American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc., and Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psychological services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Seattle Children's Hospital, Mary Bridg Children's Hospital in Tacoma, and participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor courageous kid recognition awards ceremonies and community get well cards and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore, I, David Baker, Mayor of Kenmore, on behalf of the Kenmore City Council, proclaim September 2015 to be Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Kenmore, and urge all citizens to join with the city council in this observance. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation. And this is a proclamation in honor of somebody that's been very, very important to our community and had a lot to do with the formation of the community and sort of shepherding this community through times in early years. And I had the pleasure of knowing him, and he was something special. Whereas Clifford W. Chip Davidson, 1932 to 2015, was a consummate contributor to this community since he and his family moved to Kenmore in 1961. And whereas, as a business owner, he enhanced services to boaters on North Lake, Washington, and served numerous clients in his accounting practice. And whereas, he served as Commissioner for the North Shore Utility District, Sky Comish Fire District Number 50 Commissioner, and was a volunteer for the North Shore Fire District. And whereas, he was elected to the first Kenmore City Council, helping to guide the city in its early years. And whereas, he was an active North Shore Rotary and North Shore Scholarship Foundation and many other community organizations. And whereas, he had wide-ranging interests and was an avid enthusiast of aviation and antique cars. And whereas, he was honored by the Kenmore City Council in a proclamation declaring final day of the 20th century, December 31, 1999, his last day in office as city council member, as Chip Davidson Appreciation Day. And whereas, in the words of that proclamation, "Everyone can see through this gruff facade and recognize more often than he would care to admit that a heart of gold beats beneath that exterior." And whereas, his devotion to his family, friends, and community was front and center throughout his life, and he is missed. Now therefore, I, David Baker, Mayor of the city of Kenmore, on behalf of the city council, do hereby extend our sincere appreciation and honor, the memory of Chip Davidson, and thank Joan Davidson and her family for sharing Chip with this community for so many years. The city of Kenmore will place a commemorative bench, park bench, near Lake Washington so that visitors for years to come will know of his outstanding community service. We have a number of Chip's family members, and I see his dear wife out there, Joan, and as well as fellow Rotary Club of North Shore members. So thank you all. And Mrs. Davidson, if you would care to come up, I would be happy to present you with this proclamation.
Thank you. There's a number of the family here.
Yeah, go for it. I know the family here, and if you guys want to come, that's great, too. I just know Joan. Thank you so very much.
Well.
And we miss you and the community.
I know.
You're not far.
No, I'm not far. Yes, and he wanted to do all that sort of very important.
It was.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. If you would care to say something, or any of the family would care to say something, please.
Nobody wants to say anything.
Anybody?
Chip would never be quiet.
All right.
Almost just like you, huh?
Yeah.
Well, I want to say thank you, Mayor Baker, and city council, for taking the time to put together the proclamation. Dad loved Kenmore and all that he was able to help create and build and maintain. He really loved the community and all the people here, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So now, I guess we should get back into the order of things. Agenda approval. If there are no objections, we'll approve the agenda as written. Citizen comments. This is an opportunity for you to express your opinions and views on issues that are important to you and to the community. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes, out of deference to those that work hard to keep their comments within that timeframe. So will a clerk please call the first person?
Kent Sturgis?
You're halfway through the meeting and have approved the agenda. Good evening. Kent Sturgis, 1-882-164th Avenue Northeast. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Kenmore Heritage Society. I wanted you to know that the organization was inspired by the recent surge to find ways to make Kenmore interesting and fun. So along those lines, and I believe you all have a flyer, we're sponsoring what we're calling a fun photo contest, A Day in the Life of Kenmore, a one-day flash event, you might say, Saturday, August 8. It's open to photographers anywhere, but the photos must be taken on that day inside the city limits of Kenmore. And there are six theme categories, mystery, surprise categories, that will be announced the morning of the contest, and it's all in the interpretation. The best entries will be those that interpret the categories the most creatively. It's open to all photographers, amateur, professional, big cameras, little cameras, mobile phones, et cetera. We will be judging digital photos only. Entry entrance should gather at Kenmore Camera, which is a cosponsor of the event, at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, August 8. Small entry fee, but also we encourage families, youth groups, work colleagues to form teams. There'll be a discounted entry fee, and we hope that you'll come. So please save the date. And in closing, I would ask if the city might be willing to donate a city of Kenmore flag for one of the prizes. I'm going to put a few of these flyers on the table back there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgis.
Patrick O'Brien?
Gotten some nice brochures from the SR 522 contractor. Their notifications from them are appreciated. They've highlighted what their hours of operation are, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There's still currently heavy equipment and dump trucks starting about 6:00 o'clock in the morning on 181st Street. So we appreciate what they have printed, and if they could adhere to what they've printed, that would be great. There's some other issues in Kenmore having to do with the timing and the construction of the new Kenmore Village. And I think there needs to be a time for a public hearing at the very least, and more public participation in the current design that's going forward. We know that there is possibly some people or entities already interested in renting a floor or two of the building. It may not be of sufficient scale and size, and the type of construction, I think, would be a good thing for the community to review. I don't want to see a multi-story wood building. I just think that in the long term of use, that they degrade faster, you have more black mold issues, and you certainly have a heightened fire danger. So I'd like to see a more conventional steel building built in lieu of a wooden structure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Elizabeth Mooney?
Elizabeth Mooney, 5934 Northeast, 201st Street, Kenmore. I'm coming here tonight because of the pending ordinance vote that would impact our community and C-Mex and Cal Portland, and I'm not sure I know all the details, but I'm learning, and I participated this morning, or this afternoon, in a mini-meeting with the C-Mex folks. So I'm just here to let you all know on public record that the citizens, a few of us, got together with the C-Mex folks. And I think that was thanks to our citizen Kate Donaldson talking about the possibility of having a forum where the citizens are involved, not just the city staff, not just the city staff drawing up the ordinances, but that what's also required is that the citizens have some input into the writing and the implementing. And then our staff might do the enforcing of the existing laws that are already on the books. So thanks to Ms. Donaldson, I think we had a little bit of a beginning of that forum. My understanding is that some of the council members met at her house, and that was all very serendipitous. So I'm hoping that in the very near future, we'll have some dates in a calendar whereby more people can get involved, and we can really talk about what that shoreline will look like, what the fumes will -- gosh, I don't know. What will happen to those fumes? Are they going to be monitored? Are they going to be measured? I know the ordinance has a lot to do with the noise, but ultimately, how are we going to solve the problem? And is it just through an ordinance that you'll pass tonight or not? Or do we need to tweak this more and involve more people and have some dates on a calendar for that forum to involve the citizens in addition to the city and the companies? I don't know the answers, but I know that we don't want to have anything but a healthy Kenmore. And I'm not sure if the ordinance, the new ordinance, is going to cause that to happen. So my personal opinion at the moment is that it's a work in progress, and let's get some dates in the calendar where we make sure it'll really solve the problem, which has to do not just with noise, but also with the fumes.
Thank you, Ms. Mooney.
There's no one else signed up?
Anybody else wishing we heard? Thank you all for your comments. And city manager, can you get in touch with Mr. Sturgis and see about the flag issue?
Yeah, the answer's yes, we can, yep.
Wonderful, thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, is their motion.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda stands approved as written. Next item on the agenda is a second public hearing to receive public testimony regarding ordinance number 15-0401, a development agreement with Main Street Partners 11 LLC and Spencer Square in Kenmore Village. Mr. Hampson?
Your Honor, while they're coming up tonight marks a very important milestone for the story of our downtown. As you know, Main Street Property Group has purchased and is developing the former King County Park and Ride, and they're doing a great job at that. And that project's going very well and ahead of schedule, I understand. And last November, you approved the agreement for Main Street Property Group to purchase the remaining portion of the commercial section of Kenmore Village. And in March, we closed with them on that deal, and so they own the commercial portion of Kenmore Village. We kept the front portion for future town green there along 181st at the northwest corner of 181st and 68th. And so we've been working with them over the last few months on a proposed development agreement and site plan. It's been going pretty fast, and everybody's been working really hard and doing what they can to get this approved. The goal was is to get some demolition and site work done this summer so that it would be in time for us to get going on our town green in October. So this will be the third time you have discussed this. For the past three Mondays, on July 13, you discussed this development agreement and major deal points. On July 20, you had a public hearing and discussed this further. And tonight, you're going to have a second public hearing to discuss this development agreement, and hopefully you'll have a vote on this, and hopefully we can get it done tonight. Since last night, there's been a few changes and a couple of proposed amendments to the development agreement, and I'd like to have Brian Hampson and Andrew Bauer from our Development Services Department go over that. We also have Kelly Price and Kim Faust from Main Street here to answer any questions that you may have. So Brian, you want to talk about what's transpired over the last week?
Sure. Thanks, Rob, and good evening, council. As Rob mentioned, this is a second public hearing we'll be having on this topic, and the two public hearings are required because of the deviation from the maximum height. As you know, Main Street is requesting a height deviation from our zoning code, so that's why, the reason for the second council meeting. And I also wanted to remind you that the development agreement now requires a majority plus one vote from the council. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kim or Kelly real quick, just to give a brief overview of their project.
Is this on? Okay. Yeah, so we presented the project in full back on July 13, and the renderings from that night are consistent with kind of where the project stands today. Just as a reminder, what we're really talking about is the entire site that we purchased. The Phase 1 of the development will be all of the demolition, well, first abatement of asbestos in the existing buildings, which is slated to start this week. If it didn't start actually today, followed by the demolition of those buildings, and then all of the rough grading and utility installation, water, sewer, gas, cable, fiber, et cetera, along with all the right-of-way improvements. We have already started undergrounding power lines. We'll be improving sidewalks, improving roadways, entrances to the project. All that'll be underway this summer. And then following on that, on the, what we call the north lot, which is the northernmost acre of the property, we'll start construction on a mixed-use building. That building will contain an underground or an on-grade but below-the-building parking garage that you see depicted on the picture here. And then above that parking garage, there'll be one story of commercial space that is slated to be a medical clinic. That's about 19,000 to 19,500 square feet on that story. And then above that will be three stories of residential apartments representing about 90 apartment units. The look is fairly consistent with what we've developed at Spencer 68, but for this project, we've created a more modern facade, modern layout compared to what we've done at Spencer 68. A big portion of the commercial space will be, you know, largely glass, a lot of concrete in that space, as well as a wood-type cladding on the first floor. So when it's not glass, it's the wood cladding. And then above that is hardy construction and the color palettes represented in these renderings and the color boards. So that's our plan. Again, it's been largely consistent since we presented on the 13th a lot of the details, but we're excited to get going. And like I said, if abatement didn't start today, it's starting this week, so the wheels are in motion.
I want to make one correction. I think you said three stories of residential? It's four stories with the loft above it. At one time, it was three stories, but they put it another floor. So at our last council meeting, the July 20 council meeting, you asked us to come or take a look at two things, and which we did, made those revisions to the development agreement. One was the language, to be clear, about the deviations from the minimum parking spaces for the future Phases A and D, which is the commercial building and the retail, excuse me, the restaurant building, to require that if there's deviations below the minimum parking requirements, that that would still come back to you for approval. The other deviation, or excuse me, the other amendment that you asked us to make was regarding the sign package. The first sign package showed two blade signs along 181st, or excuse me, 68th Avenue Well, it showed the two blade signs along 68th Avenue Northeast and approximately 70 square feet each, plus the evergreen sign along the south facade of the building, as well as some other parking and building entrance signage. You asked us to take a look at reducing the size of the blade signs. So with that, we discussed this with Main Street, and they had a different proposal. And what that included was, I'll go back up here, I should have put them in a different order, reducing the size of the blade signs to 45 square feet and adding other signs. And I'll let Kim explain what these were. Mark Kelly.
Oh, sure. Yeah, so as Brian mentioned, the prior blade sign was 20 feet long from a vertical standpoint. And this is not necessarily Main Street in a vacuum proposing the signage here. It's also our tenant who, you know, signage is one of their most important elements. So there's been a fair amount of discussion with them, but together, we've proposed reducing the size of that blade sign from 20 feet vertical length to 15 feet vertical length. I think the only other change is an actual sign for the building that is along what would be the south facade. You see it on my left, your right of the screen. And then, other than that, I don't think there's been...
There's a couple other changes. The awning sign, it looks more like a 3D sign now, so there's three sides to it. The parking sign changed before it was on the actual blade sign, and so it was moved over to be individual on its own from the blade sign. So it's a separate blade sign. And then the window sign along 68 and the south facade is new. The parking signs above the parking have changed. They look like they've been reduced in size. Prior to, they had, now I'll go to the first submittal. They had the parking spelled out instead of just a P. So our, we're looking for direction from you on this. Our recommendation would be to stick with the first submittal and reduce the blade signs to 45 square feet. But it sounds like Main Street's preference is to go with option B.
Just a little clarification on the P. You went past it really quick. I think it's either back one slide or there. The P, that is now going to be a standalone, or it's going to disappear totally?
One of them will disappear totally. Let me go back up to this.
It'll be on the facade.
One will be on the facade. They both previously had P signs underneath them. The southern sign had a parking sign with an arrow pointing north to the parking garage. The northern sign had a P pointing west to the parking location. And now, there's only one, correct me if I'm wrong, please, there's only one P parking blade sign proposed at the northeast corner along 68.
Councilmember Herbig, you had something?
I'm just trying to kind of wrap my head around this.
So we, they came to us with a proposal asking for these, frankly, huge signs that were well outside of our normal development standards. And we came back and said, "We want them smaller." And their response was, "Okay, well, we want even more signs." Am I correct in what I'm saying between these plans? Because this does look worse. It's like they're playing a game of poker, and they're trying to force us back into our original hand by offering us something even uglier. I mean, how many more square footage of signage are they wanting in their counteroffer?
If you include the window sign, it's probably a couple hundred more square feet.
The couple, I don't know if they're clarifications or not, but relative to the parking, what we really care about and what our residents and the customers of the tenant will care about is that people can find their way to the parking relatively easily without having to drive the streets to figure out how to enter the building. So these are the kind of standard blue parking signs that you see on just about every mixed-use or apartment building of any kind of modern vintage. And so people have come to recognize them as placefinders for entrances to parking. So that's really our interest, is making sure that anyone that wants to come to the building can find their way to a place to park. Relative to the signs, what we're calling signs on the windows, that's something that's proposed by our tenant. And I don't, those are not permanent signs. What those are is really, I think, what they would call lifestyle placards that are at street level. They can be changed over time. They're managed from either, generally from the inside of the space. And again, not uncommon at all in a retail setting to see such window displays. So it also, I think, from their standpoint, from a programming standpoint, is, you know, some of the space inside is going to be clinic rooms, office space, areas where you don't want people to see inside. And so rather than eliminating the windows entirely and making them concrete or hardy or metal, whatever the case may be, it's a way to preserve the look of the storefront, but at the same time create the privacy that they really require for their operations.
Right. But the main piece that we were discussing last week was around the blade signs. And so last week, the proposal was for about a hundred and forty square feet of blade signs between the two. And the counterproposal from you is three blade signs, they're each forty-five square feet, which is five square feet less total in signage. It's not really much, give and take. And then beyond that five square feet that you're losing, you're then adding a bunch of other signage to the proposal. It just doesn't seem like...
Yeah, I think really what's happened...
From a bargaining standpoint, it just doesn't seem like, I don't know, it just doesn't seem like a good bargaining tactic, I think, to offer something that, we're talking, this is three and a half percent smaller was your counterproposal with all the other signs. And I don't know, it just isn't very satisfying.
Yeah, no, that's a fair question. The way we viewed the proposal was taking the blade signs from twenty feet to fifteen feet. That really, in our mind and in our tenant's mind, keeps the scale of the signs appropriate to the size of the building. In terms of the third blade sign being parking, I don't know that it necessarily needs to be a third, you know, blade sign per se. Like I said, our interest is making sure that people can find where to park. And once the building begins to take shape, we're going to probably have a better idea as to how, you know, that will operate functionally. So whether it's a blade sign or some other application, the blue P is the sign for where people park. And if you don't have that, we'll have people driving around the streets scratching their head and looking for the parking, which creates all kinds of other, you know, safety hazards and whatnot. So we just want to make sure folks can figure out where to park. But our view is, again, we took them from twenty feet to fifteen feet. Whether they're fifteen feet, sixteen feet, fourteen feet, I don't know that it really matters. But they should be in scale with the building. We don't want them to be too small where they don't really matter. And we also don't want them to be too big where it just looks ridiculous as well. So, you know, this is consistent with what we've done in other projects. And they've looked pretty good, and folks have been pretty happy with them, so.
Councilmember Sperry Smith, and then Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, one of the things we asked last time was really to answer that question, compared to what? And Main Street has obviously done other buildings in the area. Could you go to that last part where you provided some examples of the signs? And I just wanted to, I'm familiar with some of these buildings, and so I just want to get a sense of what the measurements are there compared to what you're proposing for Main Street. While you're getting there, the one I'm most familiar with, because I work near there, is Slater 116. And quite frankly, I never noticed the blade signs until I got there. And so I'm really curious what the measurements are there, because to me, they're almost undersized, because you don't really see them. They don't, I mean, to me, it's not as much about the numbers, is it functional? I mean, the goal is, we want to get people to the building when they're probably going to be coming off a major place like 522. And parking is different than what people are going to expect. And so we need to, like you say, not have them driving around looking. So I'm not as concerned about the square footage as I am about proportion. So, any luck, Brian?
Yes.
Okay.
One more second.
Yeah, to answer your question on Slater 116, so that building itself is one story less. So it's a three-story project with a similar commercial first floor. And that sign is ten feet vertical dimension and three feet wide.
Okay, that makes sense. So even at the smaller, the fifteen, that's half again? Okay. And if I could, while you're here, so what was the thought behind separating the parking, the blue P, from the blade sign? Is there, was it?
There's...
No thought?
You know, it's a very, when you look at it on a rendering, it's very specific. I think what we're saying is, we need parking wayfinding. And how that gets implemented, as long as people can find their way to the parking, we don't really have a strong preference. It's just that blue P is such a symbol with an arrow as part of the P to where the parking's located. That's what we're really interested in. But whether it's a blade or on the building or a monument sign, we're pretty open. We just want to make sure that folks can not, you know, don't get frustrated.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Smith, and then Deputy Mayor, and then Councilmember Curtis.
I'll pick up on the parking. I know we discussed it last week, and there's definitely an advantage to having the P there. And I did like it on the sign. I thought it looked good on the other one. I just wish, you know, it could be on the fifteen-foot. I don't have a problem with the fifteen by three-foot, forty-five-square-foot sign. I am curious about a couple of things. These are completely permanent signs. There's no fabric on any of these. They're all backlit, is that correct?
The two blade signs, I think the way the wording in the development agreement, unless it's been modified since I've seen it, gave the option for them to be an acrylic, it's like a heavy-duty resin that would be backlit, or a more of a fabric, lit fabric sign that is easier to change. And that's really coming from input from our preferred tenant. They wanted potentially to explore that flexibility. You know, I do get the less permanent nature of it. If things change, if their name changes, if their logo changes, their color changes, it just gives them more long-term flexibility, because these signs are very expensive. So replacing them is no small feat. But from our standpoint, whatever the blade sign is made out of needs to be representative of the quality of the building. And we have full control over the signage that the tenant decides to put up within the parameters of the development agreement.
Okay, well, for me personally, I'd be for the permanent sign and not for a fabric-type sign. I think it does exude a higher quality and a more permanent nature. And then the other question I have for you on this is, on the south elevation, that's a new sign then, right? On that face? Because I don't recall seeing that.
That's correct.
And how is it that that just popped up this week?
As the, you know, the back and forth has occurred, that's just part of the proposal. I mean, you know, it's, you always have this, you always try to strike a balance between banners and more permanent signage. There's a lot of advantages to banners. But what we said is, you know, look, this building does have a name. There's going to be a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty residents there full-time. And it probably, you know, deserved some signage and a sense of branding and a sense of place. So rather than propose a series of, well, rather than install a series of banners, we just said, you know, look, let's actually put the name of the building on the major elevation.
Okay. And since we're on that, just one more comment if you don't mind, Mayor. Since we're on the south elevation, I know in this, this concept here, it has the trees showing there at the lower level. And since this is the side of the building that is at the lowest elevation grade, and therefore you have the greatest facade showing, and because of the height deviation, from what I can tell, there doesn't appear to be anything really permanent, though, on our landscaping end that has the trees in it, even though the rendering does. And I would encourage you, if the landscaping part goes through as sort of proposed, I would hope that we can have something that does everything we can to soften that side, because that's the side that's going to look directly up from the town green. And the more we can do to have some natural softening of it, I think it's a good thing.
No, and your input is good. And I think it's important to note that on the ground level, on the westernmost facade, my left, your right, that is parking within there, so that's not part of the commercial. So it serves as parking screening as well as venting. But it's important that there's landscaping in front of that to soften the look and make it more appealing, so that it almost goes away. We have the same situation at Slater 116 and Six Oaks as well, where we have parking on the ground level. And, you know, that type of landscaping and screening makes a huge difference. It almost makes that parking area disappear.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. As I recall, last week, we were mainly concerned with a significant deviation from our downtown design standards. That we, the design standards said six feet high and two feet wide, twelve square feet. And they were three by twenty, which was a significant difference. I think most of us looked at your renderings and looked at those signs on the building. And they didn't look overly large. But then again, I look at it, and I think, gosh, if they were two by six, gosh, they'd get lost in the whole thing. I think when the design standards were developed, I don't think anybody imagined a building of this size in the downtown area. This is larger than our, it's higher than our codes, bigger. It's a good-sized building. And a small sign, I think, would just get lost in all the detail of the building. So I think your fifteen-foot-high signs would be fine. I do have a concern about the landscaping and the trees, especially along 68th. If I look at that south rendering that you've got up here now, that blade sign that says Evergreen Health might get lost in a tree. And maybe you want to put it up higher. I don't know. Or plant trees and only get so high. But I think that the fifteen-foot-high signs look appropriately sized for the building. And I'm not too concerned about the added third sign. Yes, I think it looks great.
Councilmember Curtis?
First a comment, then a question for staff. The comment is, since I work for Evergreen Hospital, I will be recusing myself from any vote taken tonight. Just to make sure that I keep my hats all separated and keep me out of trouble. The question actually involves the window signs for the Evergreen space. So I don't remember ever having any discussions on window signs. I remember a lot of talk about blade signs and how big they were. And I know Cooley Smiles has two big window signs that looks like covers most of two big windows. What are the rules on window signs? I'd never really thought of those as being signs. And knowing what Evergreen actually does, they will not fill up every single window full-size. So even though they made it really easy to put in your pictures, that's not what we do.
So I can respond to that. Typically, when graphics are posted on the interior side of windows, the city hasn't really looked at those as signs or enforced those actively, or, yeah, enforced against those as signs actively that I'm aware of. So it's a little bit of an interpretation. I believe that, you know, if the city chose to be more proactive against signs on the interior of the windows, they could.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Danuski.
I've had most of my questions answered. I am more in favor of a permanent sign than a fabric sign. I would like to see the parking sign incorporated into the blade sign, if we could. I think that looks better. And also, not a huge fan of the window signs. Does it go against our, kind of our window glazing interpretation of that? Can you explain that a little?
Yeah, so the downtown design standards do have a minimum level of glazing required along the street facade. So that corner being pretty prominent, if you looked at the site plan, that's also kind of a primary gateway to where the pedestrian walkway will be, that'll go between the buildings. So, you know, one concern from staff would be just having eyes on that walkway and kind of having some minimum level of transparency from the office space out onto the walkway, just so that it's a safe and inviting walkway that's, you know, well-lit, has some visibility onto it. And then kind of same thing along 68th. The idea of having the glazing there is just that you're kind of maintaining a certain level of interest for the pedestrian and having kind of that interaction between what's going on in the building versus what's going on along the sidewalk.
And then one other question in the development agreement and signage. It says they may incorporate size identifying tenants. It says basically, including but not limited to the signage depicted in Exhibit F. So does that give them an option to totally change these signs later? With the, with those words, it's, where is it? Page eight of the contract under signage D.
That would give them the option to change the face or the name of the tenant? So for example, Evergreen Health went away, they would be still allowed the same-sized sign.
Okay, it doesn't give them the option to add a whole... Okay, it doesn't give them the option to add a whole bunch of more signs?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Smith?
Unless there's somebody else that, okay. I have a question. Brian, this, I'm hoping you can help me here. On the, the actual development agreement, so when I'm looking at this, and if you go to page 12, actually, you can go to page 10 or 12, and you have, where there's a sentence that's been added that says, including deviations from the minimum parking space requirements. And this is regarding Phase D and Phase A, and we added that. My question is, if those two are in conflict then with the paragraph on page, page eight in 8.2, with the sentence that starts, therefore, and it says, therefore, the city agrees to eliminate the minimum number of parking spaces required by KMC, and it has that, for all phases, including Phase D. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, basically, what this is saying is, we agree to eliminate the minimum parking requirements for all phases. However, we're also saying later in the development agreement, that any deviations from code on Phases A and D are going to be required to come back to council for approval, including deviations from the minimum parking standards. So you're still going to get a chance to take a look at what they're proposing.
Okay.
So that's if, sorry, that's if they deviate from the minimum parking standards. But currently, they've got pretty high parking levels, including that 18, or, excuse me, a 20,000-square-foot commercial. They're designing it as a 18- or 20,000-square-foot gym, which would be a higher parking level. And so essentially, they'd probably have to do a pretty substantial commercial building to deviate from their current traffic impact analysis. Also, in addition to that, SEPA, the SEPA that we performed on this project, was limited to the 20,000-square-foot commercial building. So if they went bigger with the commercial building, it's still coming back to you. It's still coming back to you for review, parking, and everything else that's involved.
Okay, so that was, that was actually my next question. So Phase A, if they, because right now, in the concept, it just says a one-story building. But code would require, or would allow, or zoning would allow, how many?
How many stories?
Yeah.
65 feet. 65 feet.
Right, so that's a significant difference from what it has in the concept, and especially because it's right next to the town green. So that's a, that's a big deal to me, at least. And then I was wondering how that would impact on the parking side.
So that would, if they came in with a 65-foot-high building, that would change the SEPA, and so that would have to come back to you. And of course, the parking probably too.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you.
So I want to go back to the signs. Your architect obviously picked the signs out that were with the blue parking down below. I mean, that was the way that it was originally designed. I've been to a number of your buildings, and I didn't find the signage at any one of the buildings to be out of the ordinary, extraordinarily big or anything else. They just blended in. Looking at what you're proposing, 15 feet. And if you take the old sign, the one that we asked you to come back with some changes with, if you take the P out, that sign was approximately 15 or 16 feet, taking the size of the P. Am I, I mean, am I wrong?
No, that one was 23 feet.
Oh, it was 23 feet? Okay, okay. So even so then, if that P was four foot, I mean, you're, you're like three feet bigger than whatever. So, yeah, I mean, I like the design and the style with the less number of signs and the more obvious directional to the parking. I mean, I guess I don't find them that obtrusive, looking at all the other buildings in the area that you've done, so.
The parking directional signage is, will be definitely a benefit for the public. This is, could be a confusing parking arrangement, so any kind of direction that you're going to give to the public is going to be helpful. They're going to be, you know, driving around, probably trying to park in, in the other portion of the property that's more designated for the commercial or the Kenmore Camera.
You know, the landscaping's going to be new here. And, you know, you take it a few years down the road, when the trees grow up, you know, that signage is going to become even more invisible. So I'm looking at this five, 10 years in the future, not, not the next six months or year. And I really think that it's, we would benefit, the public would benefit, from the directional parking signs attached to the signage, which really, looking at the grand scheme of things, you take that P away, you're only three foot bigger than what you're proposing now. So, and you're, no, you take the four foot away from the P.
And he is three feet square.
I was thinking it was four feet square.
Three feet square, you said it's 23 feet high, so it's down to 20 feet, and they're, and they're reducing the 20 feet to 15.
I understand exactly what they're doing. So, I mean, I guess, I much prefer the way that it was. I think simply from an aesthetics point of view, looking at all your other developments.
My understanding, my understanding is that the code also does not, any directional sign is exempt from the signage code. So I think that the parking directionals actually are not calculated as part of your typical signage code calculations.
Yeah, I just think, see, having the directional on this just makes it, makes it less cluttered and more aesthetically pleasing. Okay. Moving on. Councilmember Sperry?
Oh, I was just going to say that I concurred with you, Mr. Mayor. That was kind of what I was trying to get at, is, I think, having them connected, and having the parking sign connected to the building sign at a higher level helps people to kind of be more, you know, have more sense of where they're going. So it seems more visible to me, just the point.
So, anybody else?
So after the public hearing closes, you guys will have the opportunity to make direction.
Right. All right. No other questions?
I had one more thing.
Okay.
Were we talking about everything in the director, the development agreement now?
No, I was going to go, I got a list.
I thought you had, like, more.
Yeah, I got some more stuff to talk about.
Then I'll wait, see if I can get there.
The next revision that was made to last week's development agreement was Exhibit G. And Exhibit G is the intersection at 181st Street and 67th Avenue Northeast. The previous drawing didn't show as much curb and sidewalk protruding out into 181st Street, and the, also these two center islands. Moving on.
So before you leave that, I think that we had two lanes out. Does it still have two lanes out?
So currently, this has one lane out and one lane in, but has the potential, if we ever need to add additional lane in or out, we could do that. So the width stays the same, but the lanes in and out change.
Where are we then with Kenmore Camera, where we said that we would leave them two lanes?
I'm going to have to defer that to the city manager.
Manager?
What now?
Where are we with Kenmore Camera in the agreement that we're going to leave them two lanes out?
So far, that's what we're going to be doing.
Well, he just said, no, it's one lane in and one lane out.
So what you see needs to be approved by Kenmore Camera. They, their understanding was that two lanes would be going out. But if we're proposing one lane going out, then they need to okay it.
Any other questions on the Exhibit G? Okay, moving on. There was some language added to the development agreement that basically required a deferred review and approval from the city on the landscaping. Currently, we don't have a landscaping plan for the project, so when they do get submitted, we'll take a look and review and approve it. The landscaping requirements in the development agreement are, allow, excuse me, they require providing equal or in excess to the required parking lot landscaping that's in the code. So they, so regardless, not going to be able to go below the code's requirement. But they are going to be able to deviate from the location of the landscaping throughout the site, and particularly in the parking lot. Also allows them not to have to install the Type 2 screen that's adjacent to the community building and the future, or, excuse me, the, yeah, the future commercial building, or the restaurant in the town green, which we probably won't, don't really want a Type 2 screening between those, those buildings. Any other, any questions on landscaping?
For Danuski?
I don't know if I'm quite on landscaping, but the pedestrian walkway between the two buildings, the commercial and the Spencer Square Building, is the width of that, it looks very thin. Like, it was on, I think it's Exhibit F, but it looks pretty thin. I just was wondering if we met the minimum width on that.
I don't know if we meet the minimum or if we're over it, but I can tell you that the pathway is eight feet wide in terms of what pedestrians can walk on. And then on each side of the eight-foot pathway is two feet of landscaping and lighting. The designs we have in their infancy, but that's meant to be a pretty vibrant pathway. And we really want people to use it to access the site as one of the, one of the primary access points. But in terms of?
In terms of the code-required widths, it is required, any buildings greater than three stories in height, that's a minimum of eight feet. They actually do meet the eight feet. However, there's an average width of 12 feet along there, and they're deviating from that, and probably in the range of 10 feet. As is shown on the site plan, the proposed walkway will vary from eight to 18 feet.
The landscaping's not required, so if we got rid of the two feet of landscaping on either side, we'd be at the 12 feet. Okay. So we feel that the landscaping is more of a benefit than having a wider concrete surface. I agree.
Okay. Okay, moving on. The Exhibit B, the site plan and staff report, was changed to depict the building modulations. We received today a updated building modulation packet, but I'll let either Kelly or Kim explain those building components.
Well, we reviewed the design standards, and the section that I think the staff's been referencing is the building stepbacks and horizontal building modulation. And what we found is that there's five criteria that the city's design standards include, and you're required to meet two of them. So we actually meet three of them, and we could potentially say we meet a fourth. So the one that we really don't meet is the building stepbacks. So that's where you're required to step back six feet in a couple of different locations. What we do meet are the horizontal building modulation, where we meet the, we have got modulation every 38 feet, which is, is actually more than what's required. We also have a modulated roofline, which is another one of the requirements, which we actually have quite a bit of modulation on our roofline, just because of the loft units at the top. And then building articulation with at least one of the elements, change color within the building plan, we do that, decks and balconies, yes. Repeat distinctive window patterns, yes. So we feel like we've, we've more than met that criteria requirement, even though we don't meet the, the building stepbacks, which is not required.
So we agree on that. So we just folded into the site plan and the staff report, the new plans that we received today, showing that, how it complies to code. Lastly, I wanted to give an explanation on the building materials that the Main Street is proposing and how those deviate from code. So the code currently requires commercial and mixed-use buildings to be primarily of brick, stone, ceramic tile, split-faced alternate-course concrete masonry units, or stucco. And as Kelly mentioned in his opening presentation, he's, they are proposing a smooth wallboard with reveals, similar to the Spencer 68 project. Also, the horizontal lap siding, and also mixed-stained siding, which we do have a project board over here that shows the mixed-stained siding. So it's, you know, it's similar to a, a other siding material that has the look and feel, or I should say, the look of a wood product.
Mr. City Attorney?
Mayor Baker, we've been caucusing on the side here regarding the question asked by Councilmember Smith as to whether there was an inconsistency between new sections 8.4C and F and Section 8.2. And we've discovered that there is an inconsistency, and I would have a recommendation for changes to 8.2.
Anything else?
Should I do that now, or did you want to do later?
Yeah, go ahead.
So what you would do is go to 8.2, and in the last sentence, it currently says, therefore, the city agrees to eliminate the minimum number of parking spaces required by KMC 1840030 for all phases of the Spencer Square project, et cetera. What it should now say is, except as provided in Sections 8.4C and 8.4F, the city agrees to eliminate the minimum number of parking spaces required by 1840030 for all phases of the Spencer Square project. And those two sections are the sections that relate to Phases D and F, I brought, A, D and A. Which are not supposed to have automatic exemptions from the parking requirements. Those exemptions have to come to the council for approval.
Okay, that was 8.2 what?
8.4C and 8.4F.
And the section you're, you're changing?
Is 8.2, last sentence.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. 8.2, okay. All right. Any other questions? Our, Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify the paragraph above it that's talking, referring to the signage, small letter D. And then it says, including but not limited to the signage depicted on Exhibit F. Can you go back to that one, just so I can see what, which one we landed on here in this agreement? Is that the first one? You've got sign F, sign G, sign A, sign B.
This, this proposal is Exhibit F, it's the second, Option 2.
So it's got the second one? Okay.
So we currently do not have an Exhibit F attached to the?
Right.
Right, okay.
Right, yeah.
And my understanding is you have not yet provided direction on this?
Correct.
And that we will have the public hearing, public comment, and then after the public comment, you will give us direction on this and any other issues?
Certainly, thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you. I'm going to declare the public hearing open to receive testimony on, oh, let me get to the page. To receive a public testimony regarding ordinance number 15-0401, development agreement with Main Street Partners, and for Spencer Square and Kenmore Village. Anybody wishing to testify? Could clerk please call the first person?
Patrick O'Brien.
Patrick O'Brien.
Patrick O'Brien, 6330 Northeast 181st Street, Kenmore, Washington. First of all, Councilman Curtis, thank you for noticing that your employer might be the main renter there, so that was a good job recusing yourself on that. My second thought is that if you want Evergreen Hospital to occupy this space, why not build them something very similar to what they have already? What I spoke of earlier, of the building materials and things like that are not what Evergreen Hospital would specify for their building, and certainly not a building they'd occupy for multiple years. So the concept of changing the hard and fast rules on what this can be made out of seem kind of ridiculous. Any wood product also is much more absorbent towards viruses and germs, and we have two medical people here, so you would know that any type of black mold, any kind of SARS, or any of that kind of stuff could embed itself much more easily in a wooden structure than a concrete or brick structure. Easier to clean, too, because you can use liquids to clean it. I have not heard anything about hazardous materials. Every hospital has red garbage sacks and bags, and you incinerate that stuff. And rather than talk about signage for an hour, I think you would have addressed how you're going to dispose of any sort of medical waste. And then I would also talk about what is going to be the relative uptake of people living in a medical facility. I hope they're aged and don't know what's going on, because I, for one, would not want to be living on the floor right underneath people hacking or being seen for who knows what sort of ailment. I think the addition of a windsock would be great, since Kenmore Air is going to fly right over this. I would say build it even taller than it is right now, because ultimately, you're building for what happened 10 years ago, not the future. I would go to 150 feet. I would let these builders go with higher standards and a building that will get noticed throughout Lake Washington, and so I wouldn't go smaller. I would go higher. But then again, it's going to create a traffic mess on 181st, and we can talk about that once we have Evergreen Hospital in the bag as a long-term leaseee. We don't have them in the bag right now. You have no signed contract or agreement with them. I just checked on that. The downtown task force had a very exhaustive process where we said what we wanted for our downtown Kenmore Village. I have not seen any compare to comparison of the expensive and exhaustive plans the city did to come up with the concept of how we were going to develop the Kenmore Village. You know, I'm all in favor of doing something. I'm for doing something bigger. I'm for looking at some problems that you have not addressed yet. More parking, definitely more parking. You've already got a jumble of parking on 181st and 68th, and with, anytime you go to Evergreen, parking is an issue. And if you've got your mother, your aunt, or anybody like that, you need wider parking to get people out of wheelchairs and things like that, and you need to be able in a short distance, totter them in and see the medical expert they've come to see. So not less, more parking. I covered that. Okay, ground testing. We know that the post office has contamination from ground solvents from a former dry cleaning. I want to see ground testing on anything you dig up there, so you'll know what you got in the ground. I mean, we have a big argument in this town about, oh, we don't need to do any ground testing. Well, I think we do, because we know the site, the post office site, is contaminated. So to say, oh, we're not testing, that's kind of ridiculous. Hardyboard construction, like I said, is bad. I thought the design looks quite a bit like City Hall. It seems that, doesn't appeal to me in a romantic or artistic sense, but that's up to you folks. Solar, I would pitch all the roofs to the south, high in the back, north to the south, so you can add solar. This is an all-day solar spot. You could basically do the whole power requirement for that structure if you added solar panels. But you can't, with a broken roof like that, pitching left, right, you know, north, south, east, and west. That's ridiculous. Pitch it all to the south, and you will make money on solar. Where's the bus stops? Where's all this transit-oriented building? I don't see anything, signage for buses, nothing. That all comes later, an afterthought? I don't know. It's not on your plan. What else can I complain about? Let's see here. Oh, last-minute changes, done by Main Street. I think you need to really air all this stuff to the public before you make a determination on this. And I certainly think there, anytime you're going to have a medical institution as your primary leaseholder, you got to build to what they will find attractive and want to stay in, because we know if plywood supply ever takes off, that that's going to have a lot better access to mass transit than the Kenmore Village site. So make something that they'll want to stay in for a long period of time. And don't shortcut yourself on materials, because that never works out. It never works out. And then, of course, you should be talking to the neighbors, because anytime you're going to have this much in-and-out traffic, this is not like, oh, I'm just coming for the day because I live here. It's like, oh, I got a half-an-hour appointment at my doctor's, and then I'm out of here again. So you're going to have a massive amount of traffic coming down 68th from the other county, and you're going to have it on 181st Street, and you haven't talked to the residents on 181st Street at all about it, or I might have heard of it. And then, of course, your intersections and how that relates to the rest of 181st going east to the transit area, you haven't tied that in. And here's your major bus terminal. I have not seen, oh, we're going to have extra-wide sidewalks so we can get people off the buses and to the hospital.
Mr. O'Brien, I can get you to wrap it up, please.
I thought that was pretty good stuff, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
There's no one else signed up?
Mrs. Mooney, if you care to testify on this topic, then certainly, and if you will, please sign after.
Yes, thank you. Elizabeth Mooney, 5934 Northeast 201st Street. I think I heard Brian Hampson, I'm sorry if I'm wrong, but I think I heard him say that maybe there was a type-two stream? No.
No.
Or any stream?
Green. Screen.
Screen.
Oh, okay, okay. I was just going to say, if in your landscaping there had been any critical areas, it would be wonderful, even if there aren't any there right now, if you could do something that enhances anything natural under that parking lot, that would be wondrous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mooney. Anybody else? Mr. Leake, if you will please be so kind as to sign afterwards, and Mrs. Mooney, if you would please go sign.
I just can't sit still on this subject. I, for one, like what I see. I like the conversation you've had. I'd like the discussion about the signs. I still think I like the original signs, for what that's worth. My background's been around construction for 40 years, 30 years in a design capacity. I'm not an architect, I'm not an interior designer, but I was in the kitchen business. I think Main Street does, by and large, a pretty darn good job of presenting a great building, as I said last weekend, or last week. So I'm all for this. Pat makes some good points. I don't know if there's room for solar. I don't know how that would work out in terms of the budget. Certainly something to consider, but hey, keep going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leake. Anybody else? Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else wishing to be heard on ordinance number 15-0401, development agreement with Main Street Partners for Spencer Square and Kenmore Village? Anybody else wishing to be heard? I declare the public hearing closed. Can you tell me what the T is? Main Street Partners, and then there's the T.
Oh, it really does, it's just initials. It really doesn't, or not even initials. It really doesn't have any meaning.
Okay, that's fine.
At one point, I mean, the backstory is, at one point, the word "trust" was thrown around, but that has a whole other legal connotation that we didn't want to get into, so therefore the-
It was just curiosity I asked last week, and you weren't here, so we're in okay. All right. So, any further discussion, any further questions? Is there any interest in discussing the signs separately? I see two. And two is not going to do it. So then the chair will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 15-0401, the development agreement between Main Street Partners for Spencer Square and Kenmore Village.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, yes.
Does that motion, excuse me, does that motion include which option of the sign, or what's the layout of the sign, and also the city attorney's modified-
Yes, and I was going to get to that city attorney. And it was going to be with the modifications to Section 4.2, as discussed.
I don't think that was particularly clear.
I don't think that was either.
I was going to state that here when I restated them.
Okay, but you'd said, as I was talking about the signs, and we all kind of looked around a little bit.
Right, but I thought we'd almost all agreed on that.
I'm not sure if there's agreement on that.
Okay, fine. Then there's, there is a motion and a second, so let's go ahead and discuss that.
So can we have a clarification after that, exactly what the motion was? I think I know, but I would like to hear, since I didn't make the motion.
Yeah, there was a motion to approve this, and I should have stated with the accepted changes to Section 8.2, as suggested by the city attorney.
Okay.
And I guess further clarification on the parking, and the, I mean, on the signage? And that was the 15-foot signs, is what I was hearing all around?
And is that with these amendments that were provided to us? Because that's what I was seconding. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page here.
And if I could add to that, Your Honor?
Please.
Yeah, just to clarify that the development agreement you approved tonight is going to include the amendments that Brian Hampson went over, the amendment regarding parking landscaping in 8.1.C., and also the change in language in the Development Services findings and conclusions and conditions of approval document, Exhibit G. And last but not least, we just still need direction on Exhibit F signage. We need some sort of direction.
Well, I thought the recommendation was the 15 feet.
The recommendation was the first option-
First option, okay.
-proposed last week, but reduce it down to 15 feet.
Okay.
To what, how many feet?
Excuse me, 45 square feet, the overall-
Which is 15 by 3.
Right, yeah.
Which is where, where we were, rather than revisiting like two of us wanted to.
I heard something different.
Sure.
I'm sorry, so what we're, so what we will be voting on according to the motion that we're discussing now would be, which version of the signs are we talking about? I am utterly lost right now, is where we are.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
Are we talking about the original, like what we were discussing last week, or are we talking about the counterproposal from Main Street?
What, is it RFI?
Please, yes, please.
Okay, so what I thought we were talking about was the Exhibit F with the addition of the parking blue P to the bottom of the blades along 68th, instead of as a standalone element elsewhere on the building? So, yeah, Exhibit F is the color rendering?
Does everybody have this? amended Exhibit F, this handout?
No, I don't actually have that piece.
Somewhere.
If you don't, that's probably where there could be a-
Yes, sir, our one thing we don't have, the one with the yellow, at least I don't have that. All right, I do now.
And the staff, you talking about the one above? Brian, the staff recommendation was that we just go with last week's-
Yeah, so let me try to clarify really quickly. This rendering here, this black and white, was last week's submittal proposal. This week is this colored rendering?
Right.
And so staff's recommendation is to go with the black and white, original submittal, but reduce the blade signs to 45 square feet overall, but not including the P parking sign, if you want to go that route. It sounded like there was some consensus with the council that the parking should be allowed, but I guess we didn't discuss if that was included in the 45 square feet or in addition to the 45 square feet.
So let's, let's get this cleared. We want to discuss the parking sign and the signage again, which I'm, you know, I think we probably should, so we're all on the same page. So what's proposed, then, is the 45 square feet, which is a 15 by 3, plus the P, the parking, in addition.
Does this also include all of the window treatments and the additional third sign?
No.
No, because it's the old one.
Okay.
Because the window treatments, is that, is that part of this signage that we're approving tonight, or is that a tenant-requested improvement?
We can, we can look at that separately as a tenant request, but as I understand it, it could be considered signed in our code and would be-
Yeah, but that's not, that's not the signage we're talking about tonight. We're talking about the blade signs and the P, right?
So the-
Or are we talking about tenant signs?
Right, well, Evergreen Health is a tenant sign, so we're talking about the signs that's in last week's exhibit.
Right, so then let me be clear, are we talking about the tenant window signs tonight?
The tenant window signs were not included in last week's submittal.
So we're not talking about tenant window signs?
No, and this amendment actually includes the P for the parking in the 45-square-foot size. I can read it to you if you want.
That's fine.
So I'm happy just proposing, or seconding the deputy mayor's approval with this amendment that are noted in here, as well as Exhibit G, which was the proposed improvements to the intersection, and-
And the modification-
And the modification to 8.2.
8.2.
Yes.
Okay.
Of the development agreement.
So are we all on the same page with this? Councilmember Sperry?
I think-
Councilmember Curtis?
I didn't understand at any point in the discussion that the parking would be part of the 45-square-feet. And I've heard a couple people say they'd rather have the parking connected to the 45-square-feet sign. I personally don't care where the parking goes, as long as it does the job of getting the people to the right place. So I would rather not be telling people where to attach parking-
So do you have an amendment, then, to this? That you would like?
I thought there were some signs that we saw that showed the Ps separate, in a different location. That, is that correct?
That was the second submittal.
So then we have three ideas floating around here.
It sounds like it.
We have what you said, with the P attached, what your recommendation is, the P attached and 15 square feet, including the P?
45 square feet.
45, including the P?
Including the P.
Including the P. We have 15 square, we have 15 by 3, 45 square feet, without the P, and the P put on other places in the building.
Or you could put it at the same place, it just wouldn't be counted into the 45-square-foot area.
So it sounds like we need to go back and figure out what we want on the parking signs, since there's now three different versions of this floating around.
Well, go, I would say, let's, somebody make a proposal, then. We have a motion on the table, and then what's the amendment to that, then?
Well, if we're going to deal with an amendment to it, then we deal with the amendment separately.
Okay.
I was going to, I was going to propose that we keep it to the 45-square-feet, they're allowed the P, and they get to choose whether they put it on the blade sign or a different location.
And the P is included in that 45-square-feet or not?
No.
No, okay. So there's a motion, and I'll second it, so for a discussion that the-
Is that a motion, or is that an amendment?
It's a motion, you have a motion for an amendment, and then you deal with that motion to the amendment.
All right.
So- So, then, the amendment that we're going to be talking about, then, is 45-square-feet with the P attached, separate, not part of the 45-square-feet.
Okay.
Is that what she said?
So, any discussion on that? I personally like the P attached. I think it adds to the directional information for the building, and I think the way that it was laid out originally, I think, is certainly better than having the Ps somewhere else. So I like the idea that they're attached.
I'm not sure that's what Stacy said, though. I thought she said the P can be anywhere, attached or non-attached.
I was giving the option of the P could be either.
P anywhere?
Yeah.
Okay.
So in other words, let the developer decide that part?
Pardon? So, okay, so 45-square-feet with the P anywhere. That's the motion.
And these would be two blade signs on 68th? Not the third one facing the parking lot?
That's, there'd be two blade signs on 68th that would have the tenant names or the building names, and there would be two separate blade signs on 68th that would have the P directional signs either attached to the blade signs or standalone from the blade
And banner? But that's not a blade sign, so we're only talking about blade signs now.
The banner that was shown on the south facade, the new banner, that is not included in the first exhibit.
Okay, but we're obviously not talking about that exhibit now.
Nope.
We're talking about the package, so-
We're talking about the package altogether.
You're talking about the amendment.
Right.
Yeah, I was thinking we were talking about the first package with the amendment. Okay.
So the amendment to this, then, is 45-square-foot blade signs with the P signs either attached or not attached. So, if there's no further discussion, voting on the amendment. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
I'll recuse myself.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
6-0.
All right. So we got the blade signs taken care of. What other signs we need to talk about?
No, nothing else.
Well, really, the only other sign that's high on the building is the building sign itself, which is on the south facade.
The evergreen sign.
Sorry?
Mr. Mayor?
No, it's a name of the building, a Spencer Square sign.
Known as Sign G.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, my understanding is the, I don't know if it would help or not if you had this amendment, where it talks about revising, basically revising the page so that it talks, basically, the only thing that we are, we're going with the first proposal that we all liked last week, but it was too big. The signage was too big, so we reduced the size of the blade signs, but we're leaving everything else the same. So I don't feel there's a need for us to discuss every, the other aspects of it, because it's all included in the, we basically, the only question we had last week was, we felt that the blade signs were possibly oversized, and so I feel like we've adequately dealt with that. I'm really glad we don't have to vote on their landscaping plan tonight. That would be really bad.
So, then, we have the amendment.
One clarification. Now, if Sign G is not a permanent sign with the, you know, the resin and backlit and whatnot, it ends up being a banner.
Okay.
So just, you know, it's-
So maybe Sign G is a sign that we can look at separately from the development agreement and see how that fits into-
Because Sign G isn't in this agreement, is it?
No, it's not in the amendment.
It's not in this agreement, but we can look at it.
So there's no reason for us to look at it at this point?
Yeah, right. If it complies to code on its, as a standalone sign.
Right, then that's, then that's code compliance, people. That's your job.
Okay.
All right. So, then, we're back to the main motion with the amendment on the signs, and the addition, accepting the city attorney's suggestion on 8.2, for clarification.
And also Exhibit G.
Yeah, and, Your Honor, and also the amendments that Brian Hampson went over, 8.1.C., landscaping, and also the changes to these Development Services Findings, Conclusions, and Conditions of Approval.
Right.
And-
Well, Mayor, we're trying to make sure that all of the amendments that you had before you tonight are mentioned in the motion somehow.
Okay. So let's restate this.
What I would recommend is that the, you have the motion clarified to state that the changes to the development agreement that are approved as part of the motion are the changes which have the title "City of Kenmore Development Services Findings, Conclusions, and Conditions of Approval" that have changes in that. Also, the changes on the document that starts with Page 6 of 24, and you'll see at the top of Page 6 that Exhibit H has been crossed off. So there's a number of changes in that document, or Exhibit I has been crossed off. Then you also have the Amendments to Spencer Square Development Agreement 1, 2, and 3 that you have taken into account, although the third item has been modified by the motion you just passed. So all those together constitute the changes to the development agreement that you have passed tonight.
Amendment we just passed. So what you're asking, then, is the motion be stated as the adoption of ordinance number 15-0401, including the contract numbers and the exhibits, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H?
Yes, with the changes that I identified in the documents before the council tonight, yes.
Right, with the changes in 8.2.
Plus the change I mentioned previously, which you've already mentioned.
Right.
Got it.
It looks like everybody agrees that that's what they understand the motion to be.
I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads here. City Clerk, do you have that? Okay. I'm glad somebody does. All right, any further discussion? The Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Well, I do want to take a minute to say thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for putting up with us. Thank you for being good negotiators and working in good faith. I think this is going to represent a real turning point for our city, and I've seen the quality work. I think this is going to be a good deal. Yes.
Councilmember Curtis, you're accusing yourself?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, second public hearing to receive public testimony ordinance number 15-0398, temporary elimination of traffic impact fees and minimum parking spaces for change of use in existing buildings on, in the north subarea of the regional business zone east of 68th Avenue Northeast. Mr. Hampson?
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. My name is Brian Hampson, Development Services-
Thank you, Council. My name is Brian Hampson, Development Services Director, and as mentioned, this is a public hearing regarding the temporary elimination of the road impact fees and minimum parking space requirements for changes of use in existing buildings in the north subarea of the regional business zone east of 68th Avenue. As mentioned, this is a second public hearing that we're having on this topic in order to encourage a new public-oriented business, such as breweries, wineries, small eating and drinking places, and other commercial-type businesses to locate in existing businesses along the north side of 175th, east of 68th Avenue Northeast, as spaces and buildings in this area become vacant. We propose to conduct an 18-month pilot program in this area to temporary reduce the, excuse me, temporary eliminate the minimum parking space requirement and eliminate the road impact fees. This pilot program is only eligible to non-residential change of uses in existing buildings in the north subarea of the regional business zone east of 68th Avenue Northeast. This area consists of 17 separate parcels with approximately 16 existing buildings, and most of these buildings are in this area, with exception to the super supplements and a few others, are industrial-style warehouse buildings with existing parking areas. And unfortunately, because of the existing parking areas, the change of uses for the tenants of the new change of uses aren't practically going to be able to provide extra parking or new parking structures, and in addition to be able to pay the road impact fees that are required with the change of uses. And so we are asking, are bringing this forward to a public hearing, and then hopefully, future, tonight, future council direction and approval. With that, I'm open to questions, or comments, questions, or?
Any comments, questions? Go ahead. Councilmember Curtis?
Just a comment that I think one thing you forgot to mention in your view was that the people who are getting the exceptions do pay, I believe, $7,500 toward off-site parking.
That's correct. The people who take advantage of the elimination to the minimum parking space requirements would be required to pay a $7,500 fee up to five years, if needed, for the city to use for additional parking.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, I'd like to know, Brian, is there, do we have any messaging plan or media plan for if we do approve this, as far as how, you know, it'd be, it's a great, I think it's, I'm in favor of it, and I just wanted to know if we have had any, if you have anything you can offer us as far as what discussions there may have been on how the word will be spread?
Assistant City Manager Nancy Alzey and myself had had discussions of that, but we haven't solidified or had any concrete statements come together, but we also do agree that it's a good idea.
Okay, great.
And Brian, you have gone door-to-door to the businesses in that zone and let them know about this.
I went door-to-door to the businesses in that zone and across the street from this zone, and let them know about this, and some of those people may be here today.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that.
All right. Any further questions? Then I declare the public hearing open to receive input on temporary elimination of traffic impact fees and minimum parking spaces for changes of use in existing buildings in the north subarea of the regional business zone east of 68th Avenue. Any clerk, please call a first person.
Patrick O'Brien, 6330, Northeast 181st Street, Kenmore. First of all, if this is a well-thought-out plan, where's the map? Where are the diagrams of the businesses that are going to benefit? Where's the diagram of how the surface street, pedestrian traffic, or even how the Burt-Gilman Trail will tie into this? No such evidence is here, because there isn't any. Who asked for this? Let's be specific about what business or entity asked for this waiver. I want to see a list. He, Brian, did a great job, or a better job than last time, saying who basically is going to be benefiting from this waiver of fees, but I'd like to have it even more specific on who the beneficiaries are, and I'd like to have some time for them to write comment or letter and have those aired with the council. Then, there's no budget for how much money is potentially being waived. The city's always looking for funds. How many, how much funds are we talking about? Are we talking about $50,000, $100,000? No one knows. It's all pretty nebulous. It's good that he went door-to-door, and he inquired across the street. Well, I don't know if he inquired across the street on 522 or across the street on 175th. That might make a difference, to see how any increased traffic would impair anybody living on that street. We know that the 192 is doing a boom in business, and their parking lot is full, and everybody's parked out on the street right now. So if you have a whole bunch more activity on that street, what's that going to cause as far as a traffic congestion? We don't know. We don't know. We don't know what sort of possible uses are going to change, but we do know that the park-and-ride is across the street, and we do know that that might tend to reduce the need for traffic, or does it? Where do people go when the park-and-ride is over full? I mean, it fills up to capacity, and that spills out on 181st and several other streets. Where are those people going to go? If you see mass transit, if you go, hey, sound transit, we're Kenmore, and we're on it as far as places for people to park, and then we're going to take your light rail or high-speed bus into town, we've provided plenty of parking for those people that are going to utilize sound traffic, and we've made it more rigorous, the amount of parking they have, to get on your buses. And as people come down from Snohomish County, they'll park in Kenmore. We already see the amount of traffic coming in from across the county line. It's noticeable. So why?
Mr. O'Brien, if I can please-
Is that it?
If I can sort of stick on topic, yes.
Sure. No, that is on topic, having to do with the need for more parking as opposed to reduced parking. So I do believe that was totally on target, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
There's no one else signed up?
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard on temporary elimination of traffic impact fees and minimum parking spaces for changes in use in existing buildings on the north subarea, regional business zone on 68th Avenue? Anybody else wishing to be heard? I declare the hearing to be closed.
Your Honor, I can make a clarification. There is a-
Please.
There's a map of the affected area in Exhibit B to the ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions? Chair, then, will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 15-0398.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Councilmember Sperry?
Yes, I'd like to speak in favor of the motion, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that we hear all the time in Kenmore is, you know, people want more places to eat, more places to gather. I think the 192 was referenced as being a very successful kind of pub gathering place along the Burt-Gilman Trail, a second business, I think it's another number, 9 yards, that's right. 9 Yards Brewing is going there. We've had inquiries from another brewery that is interested, and we found that in our code, it was difficult for the reuse of some of these existing buildings, so I think that it's great to offer a temporary, kind of an innovation zone, to see what happens, and I think it'll be good. So, yes, I support this.
Anybody else? Hearing no further discussion. The motion in front of us is to approve ordinance number 15-0398, temporary elimination of traffic impact fees and minimum parking spaces for changes in existing buildings in the north regional business zone. The Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
7-0.
Next item on the agenda is- Next item on the agenda is, um, a public hearing to receive public testimony regarding heavy manufacturing business regulations and regulatory business licenses. Uh, Mr. Hampson?
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Again, my name is Brian Hampson, Development Services Director. As mentioned, this is a second public hearing to explore new rules and regulations to regulate negative impacts of heavy manufacturing businesses within the city of Kenmore. The following topics are the regulatory areas council directed the city manager to explore. One was requiring, um, trucks leaving the businesses to cover all their loads. Unfortunately, the RCW forty-six-point-sixty-one-point-six-five-five, paragraph, parentheses, three, says that a truck does not need to cover, uh, dirt or sand or gravel if there is more than six inches of freeboard within the truck bed. And arguably, arguably, this would pre, be preempted by state law. So we're not recommending to go forward with that, um, requirement. Secondly, was to establish a business occupational tax for heavy manufacturing businesses. We're currently, are continuing to explore this option and plan on bringing something back for future discussion with the council in, uh, September or October of this year. Third is regarding, um, establishing a regulatory business license for heavy manufacturing businesses. And, uh, we have drafted up, um, rules and regulations that would have a, uh, regulatory business license for heavy industry, or excuse me, heavy manufacturing businesses. The, uh, suggested regulatory license fee for a heavy manufacturing business is two-hundred dollars per year, and this will be added to the, uh, fee schedule. Fourth was to establish a maximum noise level and hours of operation for heavy manufacturing, particularly, particularly during nighttime evenings. So we drafted a ordinance that, um, addresses the noise and hours of operation. It's attached, it, um, it controls the noise levels and hours of operation for heavy manufacturing businesses. The State Washington, excuse me, the Washington State Department of Ecology has adopted a maximum noise levels for specific environments and properties to protect against adverse noise, effects of noise, which is WAC, W-A-C, Chapter One Seven Three dash six-zero, which is also attached to the, uh, Agenda Bill. The new ordinance requires heavy manufacturing businesses to comply with the WAC One Seventy-three-dash-sixty. It further requires heavy manufacturing businesses to monitor the noise levels with instruments that meet the requirements of WAC Chapters One Seventy-three dash fifty-eight, which is attached to the council bill, and also submit those reports to the city on a quarterly basis. The, uh, new ordinance also limits heavy manufacturing business hours of operations between the hours of six AM, excuse me, ten PM and six AM, and, on Monday through Friday, and nine PM through eight AM on Saturday and Sunday. I think I read that wrong, excuse me. The new ordinance limits heavy manufacturing business so they can operate between the hours of six AM and ten PM.
Yeah.
And, or they can operate, that's Monday through Friday, or they can operate between the hours of eight AM and nine PM on Saturdays and Sundays. Sorry. The fifth, uh, item that we looked at was establishing a public nuisance for noise and odor regulations. The city has received numerous complaints regarding both noise and odors, um, coming from heavy manufacturing businesses. The attached, so we drafted up, um, an ordinance to address public nuisance and odor regulations, which is also attached to the Agenda Bill. The Public Nuisance and Disturbance Noise Chapter of the City Code, which would be eight-point-zero-five, is amended to include noise coming from heavy manufacturing businesses between six AM and ten PM on Monday through Friday and eight AM and nine PM on Saturday and Sunday. Furthermore, the Public Nuisance Chapter of the City Code, which is chap, which would be Chapter Eight-point-three-five if adopted, is amended, amended to declare offensive odors, gases, or fumes emanating from heavy manufacturing businesses to be public nuisances. And these regulations are drawn from similar regulations used by other jurisdictions. With that, uh, I'm, I'm available for questions or comments.
Questions? All right, let's, uh, oh, Councilmember Herbig.
Sorry, Brian, I just, I wanted to make sure I heard something correctly there. You were talking about the noise nuisance, um, ordinance. And it sounded like that would only apply during the hours that we're proposing for them when they're allowed to be open. Is that correct, or did I miss it or something?
Let me double-check the actual language of the ordinance, which is ordinance four-oh-four. It specifically says, "Sound originating from property on which heavy manufacturing, as defined in KMC eighteen-point-two-zero-point-one-six-seven-six, businesses are located, are located, or heavy manufacturing activities are conducted, including but not limited to concrete manufacturer and asphalt batch manufacturer, between the hours of ten PM and six AM on Monday through Friday and nine PM and eight AM on Saturday and Sunday."
Okay, so noise ordinance only applies when they're supposed to be closed? Assuming that the other?
The noise ordinance only applies to the nighttime hours regardless if they're open or closed.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Councilmember Curtis?
I have a procedural question.
Yep.
Are we going to deal with these three ordinances individually? Thank you.
But we're here having public testimony on all of them.
Correct.
Anybody else, questions? All right. Not hearing any, uh, any, any further questions. Then, uh, I will open the hearing, uh, to receive public, uh, testimony, uh, regarding heavy manufacturing business regulations and regulatory business licenses. Clerk, please call the first person.
Noel Barnett.
Noel Barnett, four-two-zero, Southwest Eleventh Avenue in Canby, Oregon. I'm the Environmental Manager for CEMEX for the Pacific Northwest. Just here to express the concerns, um, we have with, uh, proposed ordinances and their potential impact they may have on manufacturing businesses. We are currently, uh, heavily regulated by various state agencies, including Department of Ecology, Puget Sound Clear Agency, which also has interlocal agreement with the city of Kenmore to address odor concerns. All of these agencies have enforcement authority over CEMEX to ensure compliance with the applicable regulations. When it comes to these proposed ordinances, um, we have some, um, some concerns that there's not been enough of a collaborative effort between the parties that are addressing concerns and the potentially affected businesses, hence the neighbors, the city, and heavy manufacturing businesses. So before voting on whether or not to implement these proposed ordinances, we urge the city to put this matter on hold and begin a collaborative effort between the city, the neighbors, and industry to come up with solutions that are win-win for all parties involved. We've had conversations recently with some of the neighbors, and we really feel there's a, a real opportunity and willingness to work together to come up with some viable solutions. Thank you.
Chris Accio?
Barnett?
I'm Chris Accio with CEMEX. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Baker and, and council members. Um, I, I just wanted to, to take the time to address you. First of all, uh, as, as a leader in CEMEX, I just want to say, first and foremost, we're, we're proud to, to have done business within the city limits of, of Kenmore for, uh, greater than fifty years. It's, it's certainly been a pleasure and, and we really enjoy doing business here. Um, as, in, in every, really, um, community that we do business in, it, it's always our goal to be a responsible neighbor and, and community member. Um, and, and along with that, we, we take very seriously the rules and regulations, as Noel laid out, um, that, that were already, uh, imposed upon us by, by both state, uh, government agencies. And, and I, I feel that, uh, what you folks are, are proposing, uh, to impose upon us would be redundant and, and, uh, not very cost-effective, uh, or an effective use of, uh, city time. Just some examples of, of things that we have done to, uh, to be more responsible as time has come on and, and, uh, concerns have been raised. Um, one of the things that we've done is we've really tailored the type of, of work that we've targeted with, with our business. And that's not without significant impact on, on our, uh, financial results. It's, it's been at a cost to the business. But we've tailored it so, um, any state work is, is not, uh, produced and serviced out of, out of this plant. And, and the main reason for that is state work requires anti-strip, uh, for, as an additive in, into the mixes. And, and the anti-strip actually, um, counteracts the, um, the, uh, the, sorry, the, um, odor suppressant that, that we use. Um, and that ultimately, we made the business decision that even though we don't feel that we're out of compliance with, with odor based on, on using the anti-strip, we've, we've chosen not to bid that type of work out of that plant, um, just as a concern of, of the complaints that we've heard. Secondly, and, and, and hopefully it's been noticeable in, in as recent as May of twenty-fifteen, um, we've started our primary production. We've, we've switched, uh, primarily from a hot-mixed asphalt plant to a cold, uh, sorry, a warm-mixed asphalt plant, which has allowed us to, uh, with, uh, an additive into the oil, reduce the temperature that we produce at, which ultimately reduces the odor that, that we produce. We're proud to say that, uh, to our knowledge, we're the only ones within the state that have switched their primary production to this type of, of manufacturing of asphalt. And we feel that we're taking the cutting edge, uh, here to, to, all in an effort to try to reduce the impact on, on the community. Um, just, just these examples, I, I think, prove that, that we've often been and, and have a history of, of being a responsible partner. And, and truly, I ask that, that you guys table this motion or table these votes this evening on these ordinances and, and give us?
I'll try to get you to, to wrap it up, please.
Sure, yes. I'm just asking that, that you give us the, the opportunity to work collaboratively with the city and, and the residents to come to common ground.
Thank you.
Kate Donaldson?
I have a question. She left. She left. I'm not Kate, but she had to leave and she left me this. Is it okay if I read it? Who do I get in, okay?
Just go ahead and read that and?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's in her handwriting. I can submit it. So this is from Kate Donaldson. "In an effort to work together with CEMEX, Cal Portland, the city of Kenmore, and the residents of Kenmore to come to an agreement as to what would be in the best interest of the residents, I urge the city council to postpone voting on the heavy manufacturing business regulations ordinance tonight."
Patrick O'Brien?
Patrick O'Brien, six-three-three-zero, northeast One Hundred and Eighty-First Street. I, I'd like you all to visualize in your own mind what Kenmore as the promised land is. And now I want you to say, "When is that going to happen? How many years will that happen?" Evergreen Hospital's moving in, the density's going up, and the problem has not been with the nu, number of laws or agencies assigned to enforce and to ensure that the hours of operation and the noise ordinances are followed under state law and even our own city law. Not only that, there's been a total reluctance by the city to enforce the laws already on the books. Chief Sether is under instructions from somebody not to respond to nine-one-one calls on hours of operation or noise violations. They will not go and see the problem. That's illegal. So to give Brian Hampson, who doesn't get in the office until well after six o'clock, the authority to somehow come in after the fact and, "Oh, I think I might have heard some noise or about a noise," or not just an odor, but a health risk, they're talking about chemicals they're adding to something that flies through the air and, and odor suppressants, so you can't detect them. That, that's not good. But that doesn't mean he's qualified, he's not qualified to, to enact new ordinances that may be less than what you have on the books. You have not done a side-by-side comparison, as I have, of the state law and the current city ordinances that deal with this. You've only had non-direction from the city council and the city manager on taking the bull by the horns and effecting a change with the tools you have already, instead of coming up with something to quash a problem you're not willing to deal with. How many times do the residents have to call about hours of operation, three-thirty, four-thirty, one-thirty in the morning, track the trucks to not WashDOT projects downtown, but to just sites where buildings are going up in downtown Seattle? You know, that, that's not fair. That's not the use. And it certainly is a violation of state law, and it's a violation, once again, of laws you already have on the books. And, and Rob Carlinsey has chapter and verse, I, I outlined it and read, all the things you already have to act on. And we would be delighted to talk to the CEMEX and Cal Portland people. And we would like to think that whatever the measuring stick is for finding success in a, a resolution is not what the city council thinks, it's not what our, our enforcement people think, but it would be a redress back to the neighborhoods that are affected and say, "Have you seen a difference? And is it for the good? And what can we do to further this process along?" But that sort of thinking is just not part of what we do here in Kenmore. And when the mayor goes on TV and states for how many different organizations that enforced the law, that, "Oh, it's not against the law what they're doing," that's ridiculous. He is not a lawyer, he's not a legal expert. And for what reason he would go and make a pad statement about the enforceability or non-forceability of what is on the books already? That is something for Mr. Kasaguma to do. He's a legal expert. It's not for the mayor. And in the code, it expressly says that people should not try to influence the implementation of the code. And I'll leave it, I'll get another copy to Rob, who's been a pleasure to work with. At least he listens. He listens, he does what he can. But I find the whole thing farcical, that in just this amount of time, when the, when the issue comes to the bar, that you come up with watered-down ordinances, not even ordinances that are as strong as what's already on the books. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Lisa Thorsvig?
I'm Lisa Thorsvig, um, addresses six-five-two-zero, northeast One Seventy-first Place, Kenmore. My concern is the noise. I, I have to say, I haven't really smelled a lot of the fumes, um, but I have been involved in some of the late-night phone calls. Five-twenty-two in the morning, four-twenty-two in the morning is actually the earliest I have documented, um, sound coming from the companies. And with all due respect of the regulatory agencies that, um, keep track of these companies, they don't live in town with them. They're not subject to their, um, noise pollution. Uh, it is incredibly disruptive to life when you've got gravel trucks dumping one after the other, after the other, after the other, after the other, at two in the morning. An anvil, you know, stacking against steel, whichever that sound is that, um, starts in the morning. I believe that this town has changed. It used to be a little more industrial. Um, my grandparents moved here in nineteen-seventy-four. It was more of a suburb, it wasn't a town, it wasn't a cohesive community. It was more of a suburb, it wasn't a town, it wasn't a cohesive community. It has become that. Industry shouldn't really be affecting the neighborhoods, the community shouldn't be affecting, I don't believe, quality of life. So with Kenmore's goal of increasing water access, you know, building new buildings, making it walkable, making it livable, the noise, the industry, doesn't seem to quite fit our goals. I think that it should be 7:00 AM, not 6:00 AM on weekdays. 6:00 AM is pretty early, and if highway construction is limited to 7:00 AM, then I believe also the industry should be. And it is interesting to me that the fumes and the odors keep getting mentioned, but that the company representatives are not talking about the noise. That seems like an issue that's really getting avoided. I know uniforms in the past have gone down there and asked them to please change their, you know, times and their processes, but that works for about a month, two months. So I say go for it, you know, a little bit at a time, but get this passed because it's become, as far as I'm concerned, an increasing, louder, louder, more frequent livability issue.
Thank you very much.
Elizabeth Mooney?
Elizabeth Mooney, 5934 Northeast 201st Street, Kenmore. So I've got three minutes. I'm just going to start off with something a little bit different. Not all of you have been on the council for as long as I've been talking about the barges, Lake Washington, and the toxins. The ordinance that you may or may not pass tonight is not as important as the bottom line, the roots of the problem. And so not everybody knows that our city, and I completely object to this, has been actively spending thousands of dollars on lobbyists to go to DC along with our staff and mayor, et cetera, et cetera, to promote dredging of the Kenmore Navigation Channel, which of course, obviously benefits the companies that we're talking about here that we want to regulate from the city. So if you stopped pushing for dredging of the Kenmore Navigation Channel, then you would not have the barges. The barges could not bring the aggregate, and these guys would potentially leave. But that would be fair. Because right now, what you have is CEMEX offering to talk to us about what might be kind of an extraneous ordinance if it's not put together right. If you put it in tonight and you vote on it, then apparently they're not going to talk to the citizens anymore. Well, I don't know. Maybe that's a big problem, maybe that's a little problem. But maybe it makes sense to talk about it and to put off your vote. But you guys are responsible for setting the policy. You've been spending my money on Mr. Schlesinger to go to DC to promote the barging that these guys need. So if you stopped that, then they will leave because they can't barge in the aggregate for the asphalt fumes. Secondly, the noise really, yeah, it bothers some people. But I know from just talking to one person who gets those asphalt fumes every day, she has nodules on her lungs. So my question is, if you don't stop the fumes and make them measure them and find out what particles are in the fumes, then who's going to really be liable? Is it the city? Or is it CEMEX? Or is it Cal Portland? Or is it the Kenmore Industrial Park that's got the 520 bridge out there that you guys let happen? CEMEX didn't do it. They're pushing out asphalt fumes that stink. And bikers don't even want to go by without holding their, you know, mouth. And people don't want to run on the Berg-Gilman Trail. And I don't want to walk there. They're nice people. I like these people from CEMEX, and at least they talk to us. So like Kate Donaldson said, you know, we do need to have a conversation. But ultimately, you've got to stop the barges and stop our money being spent to promote their business. And then make them measure the toxins that are coming out of their fumes. Then at least you'll know if we're getting hit with what OSHA says. Just one more thing. You can Google it quick, you know, "Do asphalt fumes harm people? Headaches, rashes, cough, and possibly cancer." No, of course we don't want to be breathing that.
Ms. Mooney, could you please wrap it up?
Done.
Thank you.
Erin Anderson?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Erin Anderson. I'm here on behalf of CEMEX this evening. As you have heard, they have been a member of this community for over 50 years. I heard you celebrate somebody else who's been a member of your community for over 50 years. Members of a community are part of the roots of this community, and this goes back longer than many of us have walked this earth. They've been a taxpayer, they've been an employer, they've been a business that contributes to the vibrancy of having a freshwater port. There are very few of those. It's a rare opportunity for you to work with that natural resource and perpetuate your business, as well as the well-being of people in your community. You've heard, there are agencies with very, very, very deep experience in enforcing regulations. Department of Ecology has several thousand people, including acoustical engineers and experts on measurement of particulate matter, same with PISCA, whichever you call Puget Sound Clean Air. Those are already funded by taxpayers. Those agencies serve you, they serve the people in the audience, and they serve CEMEX. What I've heard tonight is really two things. One, there is already a huge panoply of regulation on noise, odor, of this kind of industry. The city also has its own regulations. It sounds, from what I've heard tonight, that it's an issue of enforcement of the rules on the books. Adding new rules is not self-executing. You're going to need to retain engineers, consultants, and other kinds of experts that you're already paying for down at Ecology to do the same kind of work, but you'll pay for it twice now. Actually, your citizens will pay for that again when you need to go out and retain these experts. Their message is, look at the rules you've got on the books and seize this opportunity to collaborate because any healthy community needs diversity of business, just like you have diversity in your retirement portfolio. You don't put all your eggs in one basket, you learn to live together. What I heard them say is fairly unusual to hear different, frankly disparate stakeholders on opposite sides of an issue coming together and saying, "Let's talk about this." That's rare, you don't see it very often in a community. I would hope that this council hears that message tonight. You spent an hour and a half trying to lure new business to town. Please don't dispose of a business that has been here for 50 years with the stroke of a pen. You have the opportunity tonight to work towards a win-win-win. That is your citizens, that is your businesses, taxpayers, employers in this community coming together and asking you. Take a deep breath, take a timeout, let's sit down and talk about this. Thank you.
Beth Ginsburg?
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Beth Ginsburg. I'm also outside counsel to CEMEX. Besides being unnecessary and potentially overly oppressive, the legislation that we're talking about tonight is likely illegal and will almost certainly lead to litigation. From what I understand, the city is proposing to single out two longstanding businesses that it disfavors by requiring them and them alone to obtain a business license, which can be denied or revoked, essentially at will. Whenever the city manager believes that he or she smells an odor or hears a noise, that he or she deems objectionable from one of these facilities. Surely, there are other facilities that emit odors and noise. Why are we only targeting two? Is that fair? Is that constitutional? The authority that the city is proposing to give itself is overly broad and it's standardless. As presently drafted, we don't know how much noise or what type of noise is objectionable or too much. What type of smell will be enough to warrant a denial or a summary revocation of a business license for a business that's been here for 55 years? It's kind of like the pornography test that the Supreme Court justices once looked at. The famous slogan, "I know it when I hear it," or "I know it when I smell it." And that doesn't pass constitutional muster. How is the city going to determine when and whether to revoke or deny a business license? What kind of notice will the city provide? What kind of evidentiary record will the city have to build before it does this? How many alleged violations will it take before the city manager decides enough is enough and I'm going to put a facility out of business? In other words, what kind of process is going to be utilized? Will that meet constitutional scrutiny? These are fundamental questions that should be addressed before enacting this type of summary legislation, which gives the city the power to simultaneously act, as it now stands, as legislator, regulator, judge, and jury. As currently conceived, it's anyone's guess how this power will be exercised. In addition, as you've heard others talk about, there are existing laws on the books. Why is it that we need additional odor standards and additional noise regulations? How will those interact with the inter-local agreement that the city has just entered into with PISCA? How are we going to adjudicate which layer of regulation applies and when? Given the panoply of existing regulations that went through substantial notice and comment, why does the city really think it needs to add to this? In conclusion, I see my time is running out. The city, again, should not rush to judgment by adopting this legally problematic and expensive scheme. In the end, it's going to create more problems than it fixes, likely resulting in unnecessary, complex, and expensive litigation. CEMEX urges you to take a step backward and rethink whether this drastic set of measures is really the best solution for a situation that can be managed through existing legal authority and the goodwill of CEMEX and its neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ginsburg.
Has anyone else signed up?
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, Mr. Leek. If you would, again, please sign up when you're done, I would appreciate it.
Indeed. Bill Leek, 15102, 64th Court, Northeast, Kenmore, Washington. This is an issue I can't sit still on either. I never would have believed, having served on the task force from 1994 to 1998 about Lake Point, that we'd be dealing with this issue. I had hoped at that time we'd have a grand scheme coming out of the island or whatever you want to call it, the peninsula out there, and our company here in question would be making beaucoup bucks supplying the cement over there, and then eventually it would move on. You know, I agree with the business standpoint, and they've been here for 55 years, but they can't deny that Kenmore is changing, and they can certainly see that. There's buildings rising on the other side of SR 522. I heard what I think was an attempt to collaborate between citizens and the company recently. If that's indeed true, if you think that's true, I would go along with the plan. There's nothing like goodwill over anything else. Give them another chance, let them talk. You can always resurrect what you want to do or what you're considering tonight. At least, I think, procedurally, you can do that. But I think the company needs to realize that the days are numbered. That may be one year, that may be 10 years, that may be 20 years, but at some point, that plant can't stay here. Now, I grew up above Interbay in Magnolia. The railroad's still there, it's probably going to be there for some time, but even Interbay is changing. If you look at Elliott Avenue from the South Bridge in Magnolia down to downtown, black stock lumber is no longer there. Eventually, as time marches on and development occurs, one supplants the other. So I'd give it another shot in terms of the goodwill. That's my advice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Leek. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
May I have a second option to respond?
This is not really a time to respond. I mean, if you want to testify, I mean, that's great. You want to be heard on the public hearing, you certainly can. You've already testified, yeah. So anybody else wishing to be heard?
How will she ever be heard again?
The public hearing, this is the way the public hearing is held.
I will not speak.
Ms. Hayes, that's great. If you want to, please sign up after you're done.
I will. Janet Hayes, 6303 Northeast 181st, number 301. First off, I wanted to, you had mentioned that you check with other jurisdictions. Does that mean, are you talking about other cities like Kirkland that has a noise ordinance, or Bridle Trails, or Totem Lake? Every other urban city that I know of has noise ordinances. To put 6:00 AM down for five of the days out of the week, I think that's incorrect. So I do think a lot of communication maybe should continue to happen before you pass any of this. Another thing that someone mentioned is it's a freshwater port. That is not a legal port. It has nothing to do with the Kenmore Navigation Channel. It is on private property. They have never paid maintenance dues as a port. So I beg to differ that argument. And also, people are getting sick. I know the gal that's sick. Today, the Vintage Rose was closed because they cannot stand the fumes. And we're putting in a hospital facility or a hospital clinic there. It won't be long before they smell that smell and they start questioning it. And yes, you can talk about, Bill is so right. CEMEX and Cal Portland have to be realistic. They aren't going to be there in five years, 10 years, maybe longer than that. I heard, and I was sold the place that I live in, that that Lake Point was going to be created and be exactly theaters, all of the, everything. That was how I bought my place, thinking, looking forward to that moment. And when is the cement plant going to be gone? Well, they're just going to stay there to do the work. Then they'll be out of there. They won't have any place to store their sand and gravel. Well, they've figured out a way to bring it in. They bring it in twice a night now on a barge with a tugboat, at night. They're supposed to be policing the turbidity they stir up, they're not doing it. We are so far behind watching out for this city and the residents in it. This is different than other cities. It is like Kirkland. Residents live close to an industry. And I think that we need to look at all of those things and not increase their hours of operation and have them open Saturday and Sunday? Please. Is there one day that we get to sleep in, maybe? Not a chance. Because they're making noise long before they open. So if they can work collaboratively and figure it out until they are pushed out of there, that's fine. But eventually, they need to realistically realize they're not going to be there. Based on all the dioxins, based on everything that's found in that channel, there should be no dredging done. They haven't even tested the birthing channel yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Ms. Hayes, please come sign in.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Ms. Hayes, would you please go sign? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard on heavy manufacturing business regulations and regulatory business licenses? I now declare the public hearing closed. So let's go ahead and treat each one of these separately then. We have ordinance number 15-0402, an ordinance of the City of Kenmore relating to regulatory business licenses and business registration and amending Title V of the Kenmore Business Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, well, I think there's some great comments made this evening, but I would say that, you know, we've been, we're 17 years into incorporation, and just like anything, a city matures, the land uses mature and change, the requirements of our cities for quality of life, for waterfront, for air, sound, whatever it is. It matures and it changes and it evolves, and it's a fluid process. And what was completely acceptable maybe 20 years ago might not be completely acceptable today. And, you know, what we're talking about on a business registration, this is regular stuff. This isn't like we're trying to drive somebody out by creating a business licensing thing. And when I hear collaboration, that's wonderful. And I would have liked to have heard collaboration when we talked about the odor nuisance and working with Puget Sound- working with Puget Sound Clean Air. We didn't get it, instead we got a threat of litigation, and it wasn't collaboration. And then tonight, we want to stop everything so we can collaborate. And I think that's nice, but what's frustrating to me is that we hear collaboration at a time when we're well into this. I don't know anybody from CEMEX that's actually presented anything in even the timeframe that we've had to discuss these. We've had, we've been discussing these, as you know, on our agenda over the last few weeks. Nobody's come to us and said, "This is what we want to do, this is what we think we can do better." We haven't heard that. What we get is, we want to talk. Well, a business licensing and registration is not overly restrictive. It is a situation where it allows us a context, we can still be collaborative, we can still have discussions with the neighbors, with our city staff, with councilmembers. They're not mutually exclusive. And so, I would say, I'm for the licensing side. I think it's a start in the right direction.
Councilmember Herbig.
Hey, Councilmember Smith hit on a lot of the points I was going to say. You know, when we had, we first talked about partnering with Puget Sound Clean Air Agency, there was no collaboration talk from CEMEX. You, or somebody from the cement plant, sent a lawyer here and essentially threatened to sue us. And that did not start conversations off the right way. This time, you send four lawyers, you're much more polite this time, I'll give you credit for that, but we need to be moving forward with something. And the business license, doing the other regulations that we're going to be discussing are important, but without the teeth of the business license, they really don't carry a whole lot of weight. So I think moving forward with the business license is important if we want to get serious collaboration from our partners in the industrial area. And I assume that we will be tweaking these over the years, and we will be having ongoing conversations with our, with affected neighbors, and with the cement plant, the asphalt plant, going forward. But I think this is a really important first step towards really making that a reality. And I had a quick question for the city attorney. Last week, we asked you about if there's any way for us to add testing to, of what's, you know, the different fumes are coming out of the different plants as part of their, part of the business license. I mean, I know we talked about that a little bit in executive session, but I just wanted, if you could just update the public on where we are on, or what your thoughts were on that.
The question you're asking me is whether the city has the authority?
Well, just where you are in the thinking from, the idea that was tossed out last week.
We've taken a look at it, and what we have determined is that the state law and the regulations aren't clear, and therefore, we have to do a little more research because the law and the regulation are not clear on the subject.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Danuski.
So I think business license is fairly reasonable. I also am hearing loud and clear that the residents and CEMEX and Cal Portland would like to work together, and would like to see something like that happen.
All right. The ordinance we're dealing with now is on the business license fees. Anybody else comment? Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, it's been said by others on the council here, but why does it take action of a business license to stimulate CEMEX now to want to talk to the citizens? This has been a problem that's been going on for years. And if collaboration was going to solve the problem, why weren't we collaborating years ago? I personally think that we have the business license, and we establish some regulations within the city, and if at the same time, these corporations want to deal with the citizens and the city and come to some workable agreement, then great. Maybe those collaborations will help you comply with any regulations and make it a healthier city. Citizens have been complaining and crying out for something, "Somebody do something." This is, the odors, the noises have been really a major negative impact on the citizens that live near these industries. But we've had no real changes in behavior. And maybe this action by the city in the business license and some regulation of the businesses, and, you know, no regulation is cast in stone, and it might be modified in the future. But I think this has gotten people to the point where you want to talk and you want to solve this problem. And so, I'm in favor of proceeding with the license.
I see there's three separate and distinct issues. This is dealing with licenses. We license businesses all the time in the community. We're not talking about odors, we're not talking about anything else, we're talking about license like we do any other business, or a few selected businesses that we do license, and that's what we're talking about. Councilmember Curtis.
I would just like to comment that I do appreciate the way the staff addressed the whole issue of licenses here, not just picking on one thing, but we really cleaned up this whole section. And little by little, that's what you guys have been doing with some of the laws we inherited from King County.
All right. So, matter at hand, then, is ordinance number 15-0402, an ordinance relating to the regulatory business licenses and business registration, amending Title V of the Kenmore Municipal Code. Is there any further discussion? There is a motion. Is there not a motion?
I don't think so.
I'll make the motion, that way approve it.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmembers Berry?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
70.
All right. Next one. This is an ordinance relating to heavy manufacturing businesses and activities controlling noise levels of such businesses, and activities establishing hours of operation for such businesses, and activities in adding a new chapter to the Kenmore Municipal Code. Councilmembers Berry.
I wonder if the city attorney might want to address the hours of operation aspect of it?
Do you have a recommendation there?
I do. The section you're talking about is Section 8404040, is that the one? Hours of operation, which is in Section 1 of this ordinance?
403, yes. The section, yes.
All right. And what it says is that heavy manufacturing businesses and activities may operate between the hours of 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM on Monday through Friday, and 8:00 AM and 9:00 PM on Saturday and Sunday. My comment is that we, the city staff, have not had the opportunity to collect enough data and information to determine properly whether those hours are the correct hours for absolutely prohibiting these businesses from operating at all. So we would like, we would recommend that more information be collected on the appropriateness of those hours before you consider adopting 8404040.
Thank you.
Mr. Hampson?
Yes, sir.
Clarification. Noise ordinance is currently on the books. Is residential, construction, housing, and that, or do we have noise ordinances in effect for commercial establishments?
We currently have noise ordinances in effect for construction activities that are related to the construction of buildings, residential or commercial or multifamily. So we have set hours that they can construct and make noise in our current code. Regarding commercial, there are various noise ordinance regarding some commercial activities, but none that are specifically related to a business activity. So if you have a heavy manufacturing business, we don't have any, currently don't have any noise ordinances that relate to the business activities that those businesses conduct.
So, I can't make a motion, but the chair can entertain a motion, to remove Section Councilmember Berry.
I'll make that based on the advice of our attorney, that we will pull 8.44.040, and that we are talking about ordinance number 15-403. So it's just that section.
And I can second that. So is there any discussion? Councilmember Danuski.
So, we would just be using the sound levels already called out by state code, correct?
That's correct. Currently, the Department of Ecology has sound level, maximum sound levels already identified in the Washington Administrative Code that we would be enforcing or referring to.
And so if these are already on the books, how are they not being enforced now?
We don't, we, the city, we don't enforce the Department of Ecology's rules and regulations, it's their responsibility to.
Is there, have we researched a way to get them to enforce? Or not?
That's a good question. They are aware of the complaints that we get from the citizens, and they haven't enforced them.
Okay. The code, it looked, when I was reading it, that the sound levels that were in there were for the receiving property, but we're talking about having sound monitoring on the, at the manufacturing property bound line. How are we going to marry those two together?
So the code, the Washington Administrative Code that addresses the maximum noise levels between properties, it does have a maximum noise level between an industrial property and another industrial property. And so, by following the regulations that are currently in place, that would be the level that they would be recording, if you will. So, there's a difference between the maximum noise level that's being received at the industrial property and/or a residential property. So the noise, or the maximum noise level that they would have to meet at their property line would be between that use and the adjacent property's use. And if it's, I don't think that the current heavy manufacturing businesses have any residential uses directly abutting it next door, so it would be the uses that are industrial to industrial.
Okay.
So, a little clarification. By adopting this, will, the noise that we're hearing in the community, certainly to the south and to the north, and the loud stuff that seems to be happening at 2, 4, 5 in the morning, is it's going to control that?
The Washington Administrative Code discusses the maximum decibels between properties. For example, the maximum decibels between an industrial property to another industrial property between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM would be 60 decibels. The maximum noise decibels between a industrial property and a residential property between the hours of 10:00 AM and, or 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM would be 50 decibels. And so, if you're having a noise that's that loud at a residential property that could be a distance away, theoretically, the decibel reading would pick up that difference at the property line, if it was loud enough to exceed the maximum noise level at the property line.
You're saying between industrial property?
Correct.
One industrial property to another industrial property?
Correct.
The second industrial property would be Pioneer Towing? Where's the second industrial property?
Would be Pioneer Towing, Kenmore Air to the...
That industrial property?
Well, the class, let's see here, the definition of a Class C is industrial zone. The definition of a Class B is a commercial zone. So Kenmore Air could effectively, essentially, be classified as a Class B. And so, the maximum decibel receiving at that property between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM would be 55 decibels?
Councilmember Herbig, then. Councilmember Berry.
So, Brian, with this regulation here, would Mr. O'Brien calling the city at 3:00 AM, I mean, would there, what would our enforcement look like if we received a call at 4:00 AM from a residential property three blocks away?
So this is a separate ordinance than ordinance number 15-404, which is a different way that we can accept or record complaints.
Okay.
For this ordinance, 15-403, the heavy manufacturing business would be required to monitor their noises at their property line with their equipment. They're also further required to submit quarterly reports to the city. If we receive a complaint, regardless of when that is, we should be able to look at the reports and see what that reading was. If it was the next day, we could reach out to the heavy manufacturing businesses and ask for that data.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Berry.
Yes, this is good discussion, and I think it's important to have this. Mr. Mayor, didn't we, weren't we dealing with that one section on operation, hours of operation?
Pulling it out. And we will deal with that as a separate motion. Oh, I mean, there is a motion on that.
Yes, I thought, I moved it, you seconded, and I don't know that we voted on that.
Not yet.
Okay.
I'm trying to get the discussion out of the way so we can vote on it.
Okay. I just wasn't sure how they were connected with the actual hours, so...
And they're not necessarily. So, let's go ahead and deal with the motion to pull out 040. Is there any further discussion on the removal of 8.44.040? Hearing no further discussion, clerk, take the roll.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes, but I look forward to continuing this discussion after the city attorney's had more time to look into it.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmembers Berry?
Yes.
70.
All right. So back to the main ordinance here, relating to heavy manufacturing businesses and activities controlling noise levels and such businesses and activities, minus the establishing hours of operation. Any further discussion? Councilmember Berry.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just noticing that right below, right above what we just talked about, and Brian also referenced a plan that the manufacturers need to come up with a plan for mitigating the noise levels that affect surrounding properties. And I think that's a great opportunity for the citizens to work, you know, with the companies, to address the specific times and interruptions that we've heard about tonight as far as noise.
So are you suggesting we table this until that happens?
No, I think, I think that Councilmember Smith said the right thing. We need to get a regulatory framework in place. We, and that's what this is about, these are the most basic type of things. And I would appreciate, you know, as most people do, that the business would work to address the citizens' complaints, and the citizens would obviously provide the feedback that's needed so that the businesses can make the adjustments. We've heard a lot here about how long the business has been here. I think the business and I are the same age. I've changed. Kenmore's changed. So, anyway, and, you know, we need to have these basics. these basic, these basic things in place. Please.
If I can please ask you to hold down the noise, we are trying to conduct a business meeting here. Anybody else? Councilmember Danuski?
I guess I'm just leaning a little more towards looking into why Department of Ecology can't enforce this and having a community conversation, but that's just a comment online. That's all.
Any other, any other comments or questions? So...
Mayor Baker?
Councilmember Curtis?
Just to comment, I think one thing that would be really helpful is to have somebody actually measuring decibel levels, and that's one thing this ordinance does.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment, if you don't mind. You know, after further discussing this with the heavy manufacturing businesses and our staff and attorney, it may be appropriate if you guys decide to go forward with this to have some kind of temporary permitting methods for exemptions, if they wanted, if there was some kind of business activities that need to be done during these hours, you know, with the proper and approved mitigation measures. And also, as Councilwoman Sperry pointed out, there is going to be a program that's going to need to be put in place. And so if there was a, a time, effective date was pushed out a little bit further in order for these plans to be available, I think that would be helpful.
So, there's two things there you're asking, I guess. Will pushing the effective date out be enough to accomplish them?
It would give them a chance to put these plans together and also purchase any required equipment. Yeah, I mean, the effective date currently is written as five days after this is passed, so I don't know if we could realistically, you know, put that plan or something in place.
Mr. City Attorney, can we push this out?
You certainly can, but I should point out that 844-0308 does not set a deadline or timeline in which the plan would have to be approved by the city.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
There is no, there is no deadline for when a plan would have to be approved under 844-0308. But you also have the option of making an ordinance effective as of a particular day.
All right. So, looking at that shortfall there, that there's no timeline specified in 030, and the fact that we can put it out, we can, we can change the effective date, is, are there any other discussions, suggestions, amendments?
Well, yeah, I think that's reasonable, and I guess I would ask Brian, what's a reasonable timeframe to expect?
You know, I'd almost like to reach out to the businesses here and ask them what they think that was the reasonable time.
So would you like to bring this particular one back to us at a later date, after you've had that opportunity? Yes. City Manager, any thoughts?
Yeah, so this is, so I would, I would think that we would need to get a realistic indication from them on how much time they would need to order equipment and put a plan in place.
So if we tabled this, let's say, until the middle of September, is that enough time to get your questions answered?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, can I interject on this issue?
Certainly, absolutely.
Can we have some finality on it and leave it so that it's to the manager's discretion on implementation, or do we have to have a specific implementation date?
If we implement it and something comes into effect, I mean, I guess, is there any issues there?
What was the question again?
If we implement this ordinance and agreements get worked out and whatever, we just leave the ordinance in effect? Is that what you see?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
So based on what I, what Mr. Kasaguma read about no fixed timeline, I think built into that is city manager discretion.
Yes.
Yes.
So, it's kind of thinking through this.
So we pass the ordinance and your, and the effective date is at your discretion?
Effective date of getting plans and equipment in place, yes.
Yes, I agree.
But the ordinance is in effect.
But if the plans and everything are not in effect, then the ordinance is still, it's sort of in effect, but not really because of that.
No, the ordinance would go into effect five days after publication, that's for sure. But the city manager would have discretion as to the timeline for getting the equipment and plans in place.
So at day six, there's really nothing to enforce, because you don't have a plan and you don't have the equipment, right?
That's one way to look at it.
Okay. Okay, so, we, Chair will entertain, Councilmember Curtis?
I guess that might be legally correct, you're the lawyer and I'm not, but it feels like it'd be better to me if we just changed the effective date to be like two months from now, or to give some reasonable time to buy equipment, implement equipment, get it tested, and all those things. I can't imagine this is going to happen faster than two months. So, I don't know, it just seems weird to implement something in five days and say, well, we won't really enforce it for who knows how long. I, it just, I don't know, that doesn't feel right to me. So I guess I'd like to make a motion or...
You can make an amendment.
...that we, instead of have an effective day of five days, that we change that to two months, or 60 days from today.
Okay, so, and I'll second that. There's a motion on the table to make the effective date 60 days from today. Any discussion on that? Councilmember Herbig?
I personally trust our city manager's discretion on this and our city attorney's advice, so I would urge no vote.
Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor?
If it's effective 60 days from now, the city manager still has discretion at that timeframe.
Any further discussion? Okay, so, there's a motion on the table to amend the effective date to 60 days from today. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
No.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
No.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
403.
All right, so, now let's go back to the main one, which is the ordinance to relating to heavy manufacturing business and activities controlling noise levels of such businesses and activities with implementation of 60 days.
What do you think about the, the temporary permits required for exemptions outside of the hours of operations with approved mitigations in place?
All right, so, then let's, the Chair will entertain a motion to add, accepting or allowing for temporary permits, allowing exceptions with appropriate mitigation is what you said?
Mr. Mayor, we did pull the hours of operation out?
Yes, I know that.
So why would we need to...
That's right. Why would you need temporary if, because of the noise part?
The noise part.
Yeah, right.
The noise part, hours.
So are we talking in the new, are we talking in the next one? Which ordinance are we talking?
On this one.
This one.
03, okay. So what section would that go under?
844-030.
844-030, okay. Mayor Baker?
Yes.
I need a clarification on what the proposal is from our official.
Mr. Hampson?
I'm looking to have a way to allow exceptions for noises in the evenings or at night at certain, certain situations through a temporary permit application.
Okay, but you're talking about an exception to 440308. As I understand your suggestion, then there would, you would grant exceptions to the maximum E, D, and A noise source and receiving property levels in the state regulations. Is that what you're requesting?
No.
Because initially I thought you were talking about exceptions to the hours of operation, which is not part of the ordinance being voted on now.
Can I interject?
Please.
I'd like us to work this out and come back to council in September with some ideas on this.
On 030?
On, on his proposal. I recommend, I recommend that you adopt the ordinance as proposed tonight, and we'll do some research on this, and we could come back in a month or so.
Okay, so we're back to the original motion?
Minus the hours of operation.
Minus 040. And this is an ordinance dealing with heavy manufacturing business and activities controlling noise levels of such businesses and activities. Does not include establishing hours of operation for such business and activities. So this is ordinance number 15-0403, minus 88.44.040. Any further discussion?
And just to clarify, it's including the extended, the effective date 60 days from today?
Yes, and, yes, that was voted on and passed. All right, no further discussion. Clerk, please take the role.
Did we have, do we have a second and first, a motion and a second?
I thought we did, but just in case, then the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 15-0403 relating to heavy manufacturing businesses and activities controlling noise levels of such businesses, minus Section 040, and establishing an effective date 60 days. Is there a motion? So moved. And I'll second.
Okay.
All right.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
No.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
61.
All right. Next item, ordinance number 15-0404. This is relating to public nuisance and disturbance noise and public nuisance odors caused by heavy manufacturing businesses and activities prohibiting such noise and odors, and amending Sections 8.05.020 and 835.010 and 83.35.020 of the Kenmore Municipal Code. Any questions, any comments? Councilmember Curtis?
I'll go to the bottom line first, and then I'll fill in my reasoning. I'd like to make a motion to table this issue until we have more information on the chemicals involved and see what can be voluntarily done by CEMEX. So that's my bottom line. Now, my, my logic in getting there, the council has shown our concern for this odor issue by bringing this ordinance forward. We've been talking about this for the eight years I've been on the council, and for us to actually get to the point where we have something to discuss in a real ordinance forum has been a major, major step. We are serious about improving these issues for our citizens. CEMEX representatives talked about working on, with the city on the odor issue. Personally, I prefer to exhaust all options with cooperation and discussion before moving to strict regulations. I also have concerns about the chemicals that are actually coming from the plant. I understand that the chemicals and the odor are two different things. My understanding is that due to the age of the plant, some of the testing that would be required today is not required for old plants. My goal is to decrease the odor and understand the health risks, not to specifically penalize anyone. I prefer to stay out of the regulation of chemical exposure due to the cost and our inexperience in these issues. I would like to make the motion, as I mentioned, some of the things that CEMEX might be able to do would be to voluntarily cover their loads during the times of the year that the odors are present. It's not all year, it depends on which way the air is flowing and those sort of things. So, and they may have some other ideas as well. So we can't require them to cover loads, but they may say, you know, instead of having this regulation, we'd be willing to do that voluntarily at the bad times of the year. We can also proceed with any of these ordinances if progress can't be made. I believe the license regulation ordinance we just passed will help stimulate discussion and collaboration to move this discussion along. So that's my rationale for recommending that we motion, table this motion.
Okay, there's a motion to table.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Okay, with a motion to table, there is no discussion.
Who seconded it?
Take your pick, either Council, Councilmember Smith or Councilmember Danuski.
Okay, thank you.
But can you table a motion that hasn't been made?
They just made it.
Yes, maybe.
No, you made a motion to table.
There is a motion to table.
Tabled the ordinance.
That's what you do. And there is no, there is no, so we're tabling this issue, and...
There's some high number of votes required to pass this.
There is. There's, it takes five. So, with that, the clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
No.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
No.
Our motion is tabled, and we will look at it further. Councilmember Sperry?
Point of order, there was no motion that was tabled. You postponed discussion of this ordinance. There was no motion on the ordinance. The motion was to table or to...
We tabled this discussion on this.
Okay, you just said you've tabled the motion.
Okay, we've tabled the discussion on this. All right. Councilmember Sperry?
Two things. First is, is this to an indefinite time, or is this going to be brought back at a certain time?
I know, it's indefinite.
Okay, second question. I, so I appreciate Dr. Curtis, and I appreciate the concerns that he has about the, you know, looking further into the fumes and the health risks and all that. What I, I see that as another step and another thing that we need to look into. I don't necessarily see it connected with this nuisance ordinance, because this is really about what we're doing already, which is monitoring the foul odors. We're already doing that. And it's also providing that extra piece that we need for the late night noises, that it's not just this particular manufacturer. You know, it includes the lab music. I mean, it's just part of a list. And so even though I understand that, you know, obviously I didn't, that this has been tabled to a future time, my question is, what exactly is going to be different about that later point? What it is that we are really looking for? Are we looking to add a whole separate, separate regulations to this? Are we, I mean, that's kind of where I feel like we need to have more discussion. Are we, I mean, that's kind of where I feel like we need to have more discussion on this.
And I think that's all going to be looked at. Councilmember Smith?
Well, I think for me, what I want to see is, I want to see what we can do, what we can do together as a city, as industrial uses, as citizens out there. I want to see what else is possible. Honestly, I'll tell you, when I came here tonight, I was leaning more towards approving it rather than not, and with some of the comments made, the discussions we've had this evening, I think we implemented two things that are very good and will help move us in the right direction, and it, I don't think that there's a timeframe, we need to bring this back right now. I think, let's see what kind of progress we can make and what we can do. So that was my reason for seconding it.
Councilmember Curtis?
I would just say, in that spirit of collaboration, one thing I would hope for would be to see some actual testing of the chemicals present. I understand, at least I believe I understand that because the plant has been grandfathered in, that we, you are meeting every requirement that's put on you, but the requirements are pretty low because of the grandfathering issue. And that we can't require extra testing, I totally understand that, but I'm hoping that in that spirit of collaboration, I can know that our citizens are safe. So I work in the Kenmore Clinic, just up the hill here. We smell the odor sometimes, and, you know, it's like when you get new asphalt in front of your house. So it's not, you know, we smell it, we can notice it, and it's just certain times of the year. So as long as, you know, odors are one thing, bad chemicals that do harm are another. And to my satisfaction, those two questions haven't been answered.
Councilmember Herbig?
I would just hope that we see regular updates from staff about, if there are conversations going on, how the ordinances that we did pass with the business license are working out. I hope that we can hear regularly from staff over the next couple of months to help us figure out if we need to move forward with this final, this final piece. And I second what Council, what Councilmember Curtis said. I would love to find out what's actually coming out of those stacks and the rest of the, the rest of the plant there, but I honestly don't know if we have tools to get that information. That would be a great way to help, to collaborate with us, would be to let us know what our citizens are being exposed to, and what folks in the Burke Gowan are being exposed to. That would be very helpful to know. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Next item on the agenda.
Your Honor, Zach Richardson is a happy man right now. His wife just delivered their baby, and it's a baby, baby girl, yes, and I hear mother and baby are doing fine. So he's not here tonight. Chris is fully prepared to carry the baton for him, but given the late hour, I'm recommending that we actually just wait till Zach gets back in September or October to pick up this discussion again on road standards. Does anybody object to that?
Nope. So, that leaves us with a staff report.
That's right. Your Honor, I have several items, but first we will have Kathy Beckett, our graduate intern, come up, and Brett Schock, our traffic engineer, to give you an update on school zone speed cameras. You may recall that the pedestrian safety ad hoc committee gave you a report last year with a bunch of recommendations, and one of those recommendations was to take a look at cameras and, speed cameras in school zones. So we are following up with that particular item and that recommendation made by the ad hoc committee, and for the past few months, we've had Brett and Kathy working together as a team, studying it and researching it. We don't have conclusions or recommendations to give you tonight, but just, we just want to get on the record what's been done so far, and when we plan to bring this back to you, and what next steps we need to accomplish before we do. So Kathy, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Kathy Beckett, graduate intern in the city manager's office, and I'm here with Brett Schock, our traffic engineer. And we're here tonight to share with you an update on research that we've been conducting since May on the use of automated camera systems, potential use of automated camera systems in the school zones. And like our city manager said, this research is a follow-up on the recommendations made in 2012 by the ad hoc committee on pedestrian bicycle safety. Now, the goals of automated enforcement camera system are to reduce speed and collisions, and this is compatible with the City of Kenmore's Target Zero initiative. The methods of data collection that we used in compiling our report, first we did a literature review, and this included the U.S. Department of Transportation published research, and also the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration reports. Then we turned to the City of Kenmore Public Works Department for data, current data on active school zone speed, collision reports, and the frequency of citizen requests. I spoke with King County District Court to compile a financial history, and also to acquire data used for estimates, for financial estimates. We received legal recommendations from the City of Kenmore prosecuting attorney Sarah Roberts, and also I conducted interviews with numerous staff members here at the City of Kenmore, and also from neighboring cities of Auburn, Bellevue, Lake Forest Park, Redmond, and Renton. And now we'll hear from our traffic engineer Brett Schock.
All right. Just a quick overview of the existing conditions. Within Kenmore, there are three elementary schools, each of which fronts on a major road tour on arterials. Arrowhead Elementary is on Juanita Drive with a crosswalk across Juanita. Kenmore Elementary is adjacent to 73rd Avenue with a crosswalk across 73rd, and Morelands Elementary is adjacent to 84th, which is classified as a collector and has a crosswalk of 84th. There is also Kenmore Junior High School in the northern part of Kenmore, and Englemore High School off of Simons Road. At the elementary schools, they all have at least one zone centered on that crosswalk, which has a flasher indicated 20 mile an hour school zone when children are present, an active school zone, which is defined as the period immediately before and a couple minutes after the morning bell, and from the afternoon bell for approximately 10 minutes afterwards. That's defined as the active school zone time. The junior high school and the high school do not have flashers. The junior high school has one crosswalk of 202nd that has static signs for 20 miles an hour. It has been standard King County practice that the junior highs and high schools are not given designated school zones, and that was just carried forward when Kenmore Incorporated. So the engineering data that we took, we put out our automated tube counters at the different schools, and when we looked at it from the perspective of the auto, of the active school zone time, it became apparent that we needed to collect some additional data. Usually our analysis of that information is pretty cut and dry, we can just look at the full day. This required, we need to look at very specific 10-minute intervals at certain times of day, and even the direction certainly mattered. On, you know, on Juanita, where we set up the counter, we were measuring south, I'm sorry, northbound traffic that was approaching the crosswalk, so they had just entered the school zone, but we were measuring southbound traffic that had already passed over the crosswalk and was exiting the school zone. So it gave slightly different data, which is the reason that we'll be collecting additional data on the other side of those crosswalks in the fall. That data was recorded the last full week of school in June. We also looked at the collision database, and a definite positive is that we found no recorded collisions in the last 15 years during those active school zone times. We had three collisions that were within an hour of an active school zone time, one of them being near the high school, and the other two being near elementary schools, but they were approximately 45 minutes outside of that active school zone time. The citizen action requests, we have, again, a fairly clean record of that. We've not had more than one every three years when averaged out. The only time that we had two requests that were within a year were by the same individual at the same school, and that was about seven years ago.
So can I clarify that? So one request, you haven't typically had more than one request per year, per school, or for all five schools?
For all schools.
Now, as far as the financial impact, the revenues and expenses of the potential use of an automated camera system were estimated using the violations based on current speed data and fines based on historical data from all other, from those other cities I spoke about. And other experiences or expenses were based on King County District Court history and interviews with third-party vendors. Now, neighboring cities had differing experiences with the cameras. Some cities reported reductions in collisions and speeds, and they realized net revenue. And other cities removed the systems or terminated the programs after a trial use. And current academic research and field program evaluations in the U.S. and worldwide show that there is a reduction in injury-related accidents and vehicular speeds with the use of these automated systems. We consulted with King, or with the Kenmore Police.
We've got one question for you. Sorry.
Oh, yes.
The academic study, was that in school zone specifically, or in general, automated systems decrease speeds in accidents?
It was both.
Okay.
It was broken down both ways.
Thank you.
Now, the Kenmore Police were consulted, and they noted that civil fines are issued for violations in school zones where these automated systems are used as compared to moving violations that are currently issued by police for speeding in school zones. And the police also noticed that police visibility in school zones is a form of education to the public about the need for reducing speeds in school zones. Now, the next step in our research is to, as Brett said, to conduct, to collect more field data in the fall, and then to continue to conduct additional research, and the results of the analysis will be presented to the city council prior to the year end.
Any other questions? Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you for your research, Kathy, and thank you for doing this. Could you go back to the civil fines versus moving violations? I'm assuming civil fines are with the cameras, it's just a picture, and it's, they get charged money, and obviously moving violations seem more serious. So did the, did the police have any other feedback on this, potential use, not use? Any, is it just different, different ways of doing the same thing, or what?
They did. The violations, the fine that comes in from the violations that the police give, one thing that they would be giving up if a camera system is used is, at the end of the year, those violations can go towards the purchase of radars, radar guns, for the police department, and that's been something that they've been able to acquire, use to acquire radar guns over the course of the last number of years.
Thank you.
I have a comment. I think this is really useful information, and I think we should stop now, not waste any more time or studies, and be done with this thing. So if in 15 years, we have basically proven our citizens are really careful in school district, there's lots of other places they're not really careful, but I think we're, we've proven this is one of the safe areas, and even though we initially looked at it because we're concerned safety everywhere, I think we should take the data we have and move on to somewhere else.
Councilmember Herbig?
We have emails, we got, who was it that contacted us? The crossing guard at Arrowhead Elementary was almost hit a couple of times and reached out to us, and, well, it's great to see that there are no accidents recorded in the area. I think part of that is because people are scared to have their kids walk to school, and that's because people are driving, you know, they're scared. And if we turn some of our school zones into like what we drive through in Lake Forest Park, where you're driving 19 and a half miles an hour when you get in that area and you know you're in that area, I think that will lead to a place that feels safer and a place where parents will be more willing to let their kids walk a couple blocks to school. So I'm fully in favor of finishing up this report and looking at it again at the end of the year, and I appreciate all the work you've put into this.
Deputy Mayor?
While 15 years of, at least 15 years of no incidents is great, but then the other side of the argument is, do you have to wait till somebody's killed to do something? And you hear this from time to time. So I think we should continue looking at this and studying it, maybe, maybe some increased police activity and see if it makes a difference in the 85 percentile speeds. This is something you didn't talk about, but, you know, if 85 percentile of the drivers are obeying the law, that's great, but it only takes one of the other 15 percent to hit a child. And, and I, you know, I, I'm kind of, I have mixed feelings about it, you know, why spend the money and why be getting the revenue from such a camera, a speed camera, if we really don't need it? Then the reputation of the city is, okay, it's a revenue source, and a lot of the people in our neighboring city feel that way about their cameras. But I think we ought to look at it a little further as to what the, what the speed data is, and maybe taking a trial period of a little extra police presence in the area to see if it makes a difference.
We have tried, as we get more and more into the maturity of a city, we've tried and are working hard to become more proactive instead of reactive. And I think Deputy Mayor was right in that, when do we act? After the first accident happens, and I just, I don't want to see that. So I certainly agree with, with moving on with it, and I, you guys are doing a great job, and I really, really appreciate the effort you've put into this. Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Sperry?
Yeah, thanks for the information, and I too would like to at least, I think it would be nice to have the more finality on the data, so we kind of know where we are. But I, it's very encouraging information, at least what we do see. I do have a question for you, Brett. Could you repeat what you said on the, the flashing lights that before, how much time there is after school's out and before school, that they have those going on?
The programming of the flashers is set for approximately 20 minutes prior to the morning bell, with 15 minutes being before the bell and five minutes after, just for the morning stragglers. The afternoon is usually about 15 minutes after the bell.
Okay, so it is like, and is that something we set? Or we have our own policy on how we want to set that?
Yes, that's, the police policy helps to set that.
Because it seems like, that seems like a short, I thought I heard 10 minutes in there somewhere, and that's why I was, I thought, did I hear what I heard? Because it seems like a relatively short period of, you know, usually kids talk, parents talk, and there's a lot of, still a lot of activity, you know, well after the, the bell is rung, and so that was, I was just curious where that policy comes from. It seems like, wouldn't be a bad idea maybe to extend that to 30 minutes on each end, just as additional precaution with people that arrive early and people that stay later. So, just a thought.
Councilmember Sperry?
Well, I was actually going to ask just sort of what the next things that you would be asking for questions, but just to go back what Councilmember Smith said, I noticed that you mentioned that some of the incidents had occurred outside the time of the flashing lights, and so that would be an interesting question, particularly after school, because there's always something happening after school, you know? I don't know, thinking it a little longer or something, so, anyway. But my question to you is, so what's next? What's your next steps? What is the questions that you're going to be looking at at this point, going forward?
We'll be collecting, as I mentioned, that we collected in a certain location in relation to the crosswalk.
No, we're changing it.
We'll be collecting data on the opposite side to see what the traffic is coming inbound of the crosswalk on the opposite direction.
Now, I know that Juanita, Arrowhead, the change is going to be made to improve pedestrian crossings across Juanita.
Yes.
Is, is that something that's going to happen before this collection, after? Who knows?
It will happen before. That will be in place by the beginning of the school year.
Okay.
And I'm going to be taking this data... And I'm going to be taking this data probably in October, just to get school year running a little bit.
That would be interesting, won't it?
Yeah.
After the changes?
All right, yeah. And I wanted to give Kathy the chance to get up in front of you. I didn't realize, I didn't, I didn't think it would be a full, complete internship experience if she didn't get to at least make one presentation to you. Also, that was one of the main reasons why I wanted her to come and give you this update. Her internship ends at the end of next week, is that right?
No.
It does.
Yeah. So, thank you for all your hard work on this. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I've got a few more things, Your Honor.
But I have one more question on this.
Okay.
So did I.
The, the crossing guard at Arrowhead that had the issues a couple of times here this past year, do you know anything further on that?
Yeah. Brett's here to give you additional details, but yeah, he has met with them and he has proposed some changes to that intersection. And they seem like, they seem pretty satisfied and are pleased with the changes that are being, going to be implemented. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Is that up next? Is that up next?
Is what up next?
Him with some more comments, or no?
No.
Okay, fine.
Tell us what changes, we'll be surprised.
Oh, we can tell you what changes if you want.
Yeah, I can.
Go ahead, Brett.
Further for Ms. Beckett. Councilmember Curtis?
Not trying to be disagreeable with my counsel, but I would argue that more studies in an infrequently occurring incidence does not improve safety. And I would argue that there is probably no doubt of that in something that hasn't occurred to any significance in 15 years is not going to improve if we put in cameras. So I don't care if we study it more, but when I look at the science of it, I think there's better ways to make a difference. And I think particularly the police visibility, it sounds like that makes a difference. And I guess I'm crazy enough to think that maybe teenagers are irresponsible and maybe flashers at the junior high and high school might be a better way to spend some money if we wanted to spend some money. Yeah, instead of putting up cameras.
Thank you, Councilmember Curtis. We have heard your opinion and we certainly all appreciate it.
Get out the flashers.
All right, anything else?
[laughing]
Anything else you wanted to say?
Thank you for this opportunity.
Oh, you're entirely welcome. Yeah. And I hate to see you go.
Thank you.
Okay, I know it's getting late, but I have a few items. So last week I went to an early morning chamber general meeting and they had Mike McMiniman talk about the new McMiniman's that's coming to Bothell. And I think they're going to open in the fall. And the only reason I bring this up is I lost count of the number of times Mike McMiniman said "fun." He used that word so much. In fact, he used a variation of the word "fun" that I want to add to my vocabulary. And that word is, you ready for this? Fun-ability.
Fun-ability?
Fun-ability, yes. Mike McMiniman used that word during his presentation.
He's talked to Peter Coggi?
He might have. So, not so fun. Patty Safran, our dedicated and amazing city clerk, is going into surgery tomorrow. And it's pretty serious, major surgery. And she's going to be out for a month. Say it again?
Total hip.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, total hip, well.
So we...
Here's what we've got, two.
So this is, so, and I want to point out that she actually waited for this surgery for, for when you were going to take August off. She could have had it much earlier. So thank you for scheduling your surgery around our schedule. That was very generous of you. And we wish you a speedy recovery.
That's dedication.
Yes. She is our steward of democracy, so.
She is.
Also, the organization Arch, Coalition for Better Housing or whatever it's called, Affordable Housing, they are wanting to talk about a dedicated funding source. And they're looking to have a meeting at the end of August or the beginning of September. And they would like an elected official from each jurisdiction, from each Arch jurisdiction to be at that meeting. Nancy, would it be in the middle of the day or in the evening or do you know?
[inaudible]
So we need a volunteer from the city council who'd be willing to be an elected official and represent the city. The date has not yet been set. Again, they're thinking of end of August, beginning of September.
Probably a Wednesday or Thursday evening.
I will do it if nobody else will.
Okay, I'm hearing that the mayor will do it.
If nobody else will, because I, I certainly want other people to have the opportunity to go to some of these meetings.
Depending on the date, I would be happy to go, but it's dependent on the date.
It's, they, they need an actual day.
That would be helpful.
Okay. So what if we did this, when we find a date, we'll first ask Councilmember Herbig. And if that date doesn't work, then we will ask Councilmember Sperry. And if that date doesn't work, then we'll ask Mayor Baker. Is that okay?
That's, that's great. I think they, they wanted to have an idea of, of who was going to be representing each city so they could then start on checking schedules. But I will let them know that we, we do have representative and we'll work with them on schedule.
All right, on the pedestrian, on the pedestrian and bicycle safety and parks community conversation, we had a kickoff meeting with Burke and their team. And Chris Overlees is our project manager and our lead. And the meeting went well. One of the things they want to do early on is Burke wants to interview you all, one-on-one or two-on-one or however that works, in the next couple of weeks. And so I've asked Nancy Meehan to be the point person in coordinating those meetings with you and Burke. And they wanted to just get your sense of all this and what you're hoping the outcomes will be and what your priorities are and things like that. Last but not least, Nancy Ausley has really been keeping close tabs on the St. Edward's Seminary building and the possibility of saving it. And Kevin Daniels of Daniels Real Estate is going to be making a proposal on how he might save that building. And he's going to be, he has been in conversations with State Parks. And he and State Parks are going to have a public meeting on August 25th at 6:30 PM at North Shore Utility District to talk about what they are thinking for the St. Edward's Seminary building. So August 25th, 6:30 PM.
Yeah, that, that meeting hasn't been publicized yet. It just got, it just got scheduled. He's going to do kind of a preview of what he intends to discuss with the Parks Commission at their September meeting.
And I'm out of town for the next couple of weeks. Joanne Gregory will be our acting city manager. So let's hope things just run really smoothly and quietly. And have a great rest of your summer.
[inaudible] September, right?
Yeah, and next meeting is in September.
All right. Comments, initiatives, reports. Councilmember Smith?
Well, thanks to the staff for all the, there's been a lot, lot that we've dealt with over the last few weeks. And so I know it takes a lot to move quickly on all these different issues and, and especially with the Main Street thing. So it's pretty neat to finally get that through. And, and so I don't really have anything else to add except Patty. I, I wish you well on your surgery. And you don't look like you're lacking hipness, but hopefully they'll take care of you.
Boy, you had a whole lot of hours on your, on your, on your trek in Spain there to think of some new ones, didn't you?
The day I stop thinking of those will be the day I'll be underground, so.
Councilmember Sperry?
Nothing to add. Nothing to add. Enjoy the sea in September or at Play Day, probably.
Councilmember Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Herbig?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Danouski?
So you guys all remember how controversial it was to build the North Shore Summit Park? This weekend, the neighbors up there on their own put together a really great, huge block party. So they love it. They activated the space. There was bands, food trucks, games. It was, it was pretty cool to see them do that up there, really, really get into that park. And thank you to those who are going to help out on Play Day, August 8th. And I'll see some of you there.
Deputy Mayor?
Still working on the ETP Symposium Conference on Technology and Transportation. It's only about, what, six weeks away, October 9th. And the publicity on it will be breaking here in another few weeks. And hopefully all of you would be able to attend. It'll be a Friday all day, say about nine to three, something like that. It, well, look for the information on it. It'll be coming out shortly.
Couple of small things. I, as many of you know, I'm on the Board of Directors of the Sound Cities Association. And I'm also the chair of the Events Committee. And we're holding a breakfast event with Senator Patty Murray on the 10th. So I will have an opportunity to sit at the table with her and I sure will be talking about Kenmore. And if any of you can make it, that'd be great. I will also be talking with a number of people on the, on the Sound Transit Board about Kenmore, making sure that we stay at the top of the list and try to get the parking included. And I've got meetings with the Assistant City Manager, with a couple more board members. We're reaching out to the mayor of Edmonds and the county executive in Snohomish County. And anybody else we can find that will listen to us. So we will be out there beating the bush. And unless there's anything else, we are adjourned.